Hey, good evening, everybody. Is my mic on? Yeah. Hello? Hello, hello? Is that better? Okay. Can you hear me in the back of the room? No? Can you hear me in the back? Yeah, right? Are we ready? Is that better? No. No. Testing. Testing. Are we better? All right, well, I'll do my best to speak more loudly until we get this fixed. So, good evening, everybody, to the City Commission meeting for December 17th, 2024. This will be the last meeting we have for the year 2024. Yay! And and before we begin the meeting, I certainly want to wish everybody a very, very happy holiday season. Merry Christmas, Hanukkah. We'll be also recognizing Kwanzaa right after Christmas, so we'll be announcing the day that we'll be participating in that celebration. And I just want to thank everybody for this year. I want to thank everybody for voting this year. And we really look forward for the next four years to continue to serve in our community. So, as many of you know who have been here before, but for those who haven't, we begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then a moment of silence, and then we begin our our deep dig, deep dive into our agenda. So if I can ask you all to please rise, and I'd like to ask Sky Mallard, if from Warfield Park Play, to join me at the podium so we can together recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
Thank you, Sky. Now, I'd like to all invite you to join me in a moment of silence, and this recently, we recognized those who are homeless in our community who have passed away, and so I'd like you all to share those folks in your prayers. Okay, thank you. Normally, I recite any city folks who have retired in this past month, but I see that I have none today, so we're going to leap right into the roll call, so Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Herbst. Vice Mayor Glassman.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman.
Here.
Commissioner Sorenson.
Here.
Mayor Trent House.
Here, so we have full attendance. We have a couple of agenda announcements. We're gonna have a walk-on resolution, and then we also have changes to the agenda. CR-7 is gonna be taken off of the Consent Agenda, and it's gonna be added as a Public Hearing Number Five. So we will be hearing it tonight. It's just it just requires a public hearing and not just a Consent Agenda item. So with that in mind, would someone please like to move to approve the minutes as well as the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
So moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Mayor, did you announce the walk-on?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Pay attention.
Commissioner Herbst. Vice Mayor Glassman.
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson.
Yes.
Mayor Trent House.
Yes, and so the agenda and the minutes have been approved. Now, we have one presentation tonight, and this is the time in our in our meeting, our evening meeting, where we recognize individuals or organizations. In this particular case, we're going to be recognizing the Florida Department of Health is recognizing the city of Fort Lauderdale as a water-smart community. So I'd like to invite Mario Soza, who is the Drowning Prevention Program Manager from the Florida Department of Health in Broward County, to please step up to the podium and talk to us. Good evening. Can you push that button at the bottom of the speaker? Maybe yours is working.
Oh, perfect.
Oh, great, great.
All right. Well, thank you so much for the introduction. It is a pleasure to be here this evening to recognize the city of Fort Lauderdale for their dedication and commitment to the well-being and safety of its residents, particularly on the topic of water safety. Through partnership with the Children's Services Council of Broward County and the Florida Department of Health in Broward County, we have developed the Water Smart Communities Initiative, which is focused on promoting safe water practices throughout Broward County. Its goal is to prevent water-related accidents and to eliminate factors that contribute to drownings. By taking part in this initiative, communities such as Fort Lauderdale demonstrate a commitment not only to protecting lives, but to creating an environment where water safety is top priority. Fort Lauderdale has gone above and beyond fulfilling its annual requirements for this initiative. Through their proactive measures, they have worked tirelessly to implement and advocate for water safety practices. On behalf of the Florida Department of Health in Broward County, it is with great pride that I designate the city of Fort Lauderdale a gold water-smart community and present this plaque in recognition of their achievement. Please join me in congratulating their outstanding work and dedication to keeping our community safe.
Thank you. Now Mario was asked that we all step down from the dais and have our picture taken with him, right?
If you were in mine, I would love that.
Okay. Thank you so much. It will be probably displayed in our City Hall. Paul Apache, how is she doing?
She's doing great. She's a wonderful leader, yeah. Thank you so much.
Please say hello to her.
Okay. Now we'll move into our agenda. The beginning of our agenda consists of what are called Consent Agenda items. At this time, we would look at the the individual items, and the City Commission will be asked to vote on them all at once. If there is an agenda item that a commissioner wishes to pull and be voted on separately, we'll do so at the beginning, and anyone from the public who wishes to speak on that item will be invited to speak at that time also. If that item is not pulled, we will also invite you to speak on that item before we begin any votes. So, Commissioner Herbst, do you have any Consent Agenda items you wish to pull? Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
None.
Vice Mayor?
None.
And Commissioner Sorenson?
CR-1, please.
CR-1, okay. All right, other than CR-1, do I hear a motion to approve the Consent Agenda items?
Moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House.
Yes, so if you're here on any of those Consent Agenda items, we have now approved all of them except CR-1, and so you're certainly welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, or you can continue with and enjoy your life. Anyway, CR-1, this is a resolution approving a tri-party agreement among the Broward Metropolitan Planning Organization and the city of Fort Lauderdale and the Metropolitan Transportation Engineering and Construction Cooperative for the Seventeenth Street Mobility Hub Capital Project. Don't stampede out of the room, okay? Commissioner Sorenson?
Thank you, Mayor. Susan, if we could just have a brief overview of this, and in that overview, just address the possible tree impact, please?
Yeah, absolutely, and I think Milos is ready to present.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much, Milos. Good evening, everyone. Milos Mistoic, Acting Director for City's Transportation and Mobility Department. So, what's before you is really the action to approve the tri-party agreement between the city, the MPO, and the MTEC. This action would allow MTEC to hire a design firm who would be able to advance what is currently conceptual design into 30%, 60%, 90%, and 100% design plans and construction plans, and then we would basically go into construction. The most important thing to understand at this point is that this is only a concept, so there is still time for us to work around any impacts to the trees and make sure that ultimately we deliver a project that meets neighbors' needs and concerns.
Great, thanks, Milos, and this project goes through two neighborhoods, Croissant Park and Pointiana Park, and my understanding, the emails I've gotten, are both neighborhood associations or and/or boards have both strongly supported the plan. Is that your?
Absolutely, that's correct.
Okay, great. I met with the State Department of Transportation. You were there with me, and it sounds like the plan that I saw at least was, to your point, conceptual. There's gonna be more refinement to it. It's gonna more specifically articulate how the sidewalk is gonna meander around trees and and further details. The landscaping plan, I think, is to be determined, but that's kind of part of what will happen in the future, is that?
That is exactly correct, so under the, if this is approved tonight, then MTEC would hire a design firm again. Design would begin in early 2025. It would take more than a year to complete the design. There would be a number of public meetings and engagements in order to make sure that we ultimately, if we can provide a sidewalk and fill out the gap, we do so, but we're mindful about the trees and the impact, and exactly to your point, meander sidewalk around the trees as needed.
Okay. Great, thanks, Mayor. That's all I had. Thanks, Milos.
Thank you so much. We have several people to sign up to speak. Okay, I guess you're first, Ted. Followed by Steve Cook. Go ahead.
Hello, everybody. Ted and Sarah, the President of the Republic of River Oaks. This is the third time I've come here and spoke on the same exact thing. It's nice to hear Milo saying this is not gonna be a final vote tonight. That is still proposal, and now, let me tell you, these civic associations might agree with this, but I walk, the only part that I'm upset about or worried about is from Ninth Avenue to Fourth Avenue, not the rest of it. East onto Federal Highway, I'm good, but just that it's the only residential section there, and there's 12 houses from Ninth Avenue to Fourth Avenue that do not have sidewalks in front of their houses, and they don't want them. Now, they might not be involved in the civic association and go to Warren's, I forget what he called those, at the hospital, and and might not go to the meetings, but still, they live in Croissant Park. Nobody has talked to them except me. And I know in these houses, they definitely want, this is their landscaping all the way down to the street. This is their driveways, you know, paver driveways all the way down to the street. So we would cut a swath right in the middle of where they're used to living right now.
Well, when you say in the middle of where they're living, this is just in the first 10 feet of this front.
Yeah, you got your swale, you got your sidewalk, but see, their property has always gone right down to the road. So that's, it's a continuation of their front yard. A lot of them have landscaping, which is exactly in the row where the of them have landscaping, which is exactly in the row where the, the sidewalks would be, and it's been there for decades.
Right, so, um, so my concern would be, uh, you know, pedestrian safety, you know, Fort Lauderdale is considered one of the most dangerous places in America for pedestrian safety, and we're trying to come up with solutions to try to avoid people from having to walk in the middle of the street, and you're saying you're not in favor of that?
I was hoping.
Wait, I'm still talking.
I'm sorry, I'm so excited.
And you're saying that you would rather compromise the lives of people in order to protect the flowering plants?
You better believe it. Now, let me tell, no, let me say this, across the street, on the other side of Seventeenth Street is a full sidewalk, right across the street. Behind Seventeenth Street is Eighteenth Street, full sidewalk, both sides, from Ninth Avenue to Fourth Avenue. Next to that is Eighteenth Court, full sidewalks, both sides, Ninth Avenue to Fourth Avenue. It's just this one little part of Seventeenth Street, all residential, that has a me, a, I don't know, puzzle of sidewalks, it's not in front of every house, it is in front of every house, but it would greatly affect the houses that don't have a sidewalk if they're, if you're going to bring one in their area, and especially if we're talking, remember the last time we had that Google thing where, where they drove and, and, uh, Ben Rogers was up here with me, and, uh, and you could, we were counting off the trees, and a lot of them are very large, um, oak trees. Now, if they had this meandering thing, I'm all on board with the meandering one, but I want to make sure that they are going to do that. I watched Judge Judy, if it's not, if it's not within the four corners of a contract.
Your time is up.
If it's not, if it's not written in the four corners of a contract, it doesn't exist.
So that's what we're proposing tonight, to proceed with the design.
Okay, but put it in, if it's going to be meandering, put it in the four corners.
Let us see what the design comes back with.
All right, and I'll be here again, this is my third time already.
And we want to make sure you're here.
Yes, I'm going to mark my calendar.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Steve?
Steve Cook, Croissant Park resident, those are my neighbors he's talking about. He put this, Ted, he put this photo on social media of these two beautiful oak trees in front of a concrete wall, that, I know her, so I went over and I said, oh, you're upset about the sidewalks, and she goes, what sidewalks? And I said, well, you're all over social media as opposing these sidewalks, she says, no one's talked to me. She, what, young woman moved here from Atlanta, she's a bank executive, she goes, I'd love to have sidewalks in front of my house, and if you can avoid the trees, it'd be okay. I said, well, this, the setback is fifteen feet, so your wall is actually on your property, where your property line is, so there's room on either side of those trees. The next picture that was on, posted on social media is my best friend, she's like, eh, I'd rather not, but I don't care, I'd rather the city do something more about the cars that run these four-way stop signs, that was a bigger concern to her. The first, there's only three blocks we're talking about, the first block, there's only one house without sidewalks, the next block maybe two-fifths are sidewalks, and the next block, there's a few sidewalks, I think, but it's just connecting the dots. So, I don't know who he talked to, but he didn't talk to the people with the trees that he put on social media. For the project itself, this is a huge bike ped project, I mean, huge, you're going to have commuter rail, you have the hospital, you have Croissant Park Park, you have the school, you have Whole Foods, the walking on, in the south area of the city, there's a huge amount of people walking there. To me, this is like underlying in Miami, this is the most exciting thing in a long time for bike peds, so I hope y'all fully support it, I think it's a wonderful project. There was one suggestion that maybe since they're doing all this, and by the way, they'll be adding landscaping, not taking it away, there'll be a lot of landscaping, they're going to take up some blacktop that the, somewhere along the line they paved, and they're going to give people their swales back, they'll put trees in. Someone asked maybe some art, I was told that the city doesn't put the art in, but they can put the foundations in.
Just ask Ted, he'll go out there and paint it.
No, but I meant that it's going to be a big walking area, so maybe some artwork would be nice, I don't know, but this is a great project.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Lowell, you're just here for answering, right, okay. All right, anyone else wish to speak on this item? There being none, um, would someone like to move the item?
Moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, let me make sure, excuse me, um, Commissioner, it's a resolution, so you introduce?
Introduce.
Okay, thank you. Okay, please call the roll.
A resolution of the city commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving and authorizing execution of a tri-party agreement among the Broward Metropolitan Planning Organization and the city of Fort Lauderdale and the Metropolitan Transportation Engineering and Construction Cooperative for the design and construction of the Seventeenth Street Mobility Hub project and providing for conflict severability in an effective date. Commissioner Herbst? Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalos?
Yes, and that resolution is now approved. Moving on to M1, this is a motion approving agreements for the purchase of annual stormwater infrastructure cleaning inspections and surveying continuing services, FloTech Environmental and National Water Main Cleaning Company. It's a five-year contract, anyone have any questions with regard to this item? No one has signed up to speak, someone like to move the item?
Moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst? Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalos?
Yes, and, uh, M1 is now approved, moving on, moving on to R1, appointment of board and committee members. Uh, Mr. Cook, I want to read the names into the record.
Yes, okay, for the January seventh, twenty twenty-five resolution, Beach Business Improvement District Advisory Board, uh, Kimberly Cover, she's an alternate member for the Bee Ocean, and then for the Citizens Community of Recognition, Betty Shelley, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson, Romney Rogers, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson, Insurance Advisory Board, Steve Botkin, nominated by Mayor Trentalos, Jonathan Perillo, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson, Ted Hess Senior, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson, Mark Schwartz, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson, Joseph Pachura Senior, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson, Nuisance Abatement Board, Glenn Lindsay, nominated by Commissioner Herbst, uh, Risk Management Committee, Commissioner John Herbst, and for tonight's resolution, Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, Amanda Wilson, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson, Budget Advisory Board, Norbert Bells, nominated by Mayor Trentalos, Cemetery System Board of Trustees, Dennis Ulmer, nominated by Commissioner Beasley Pittman, Charter Revision Board, Mary Peliquin, nominated by Mayor Trentalos, Judith Stern, nominated by Commissioner Beasley Pittman, City Attorney Search Committee, McKilip Erlinson, nominated by Mayor Trentalos, Richard Weiss, nominated by Commissioner Herbst, Troy Liggett, nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman, Roosevelt Walters, nominated by Commissioner Beasley Pittman, and James Brady, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. Community Service Boards, Wisme Seas, nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman, Economic Development Advisory Board, Mariana Seiler De, Deager, nominated by Mayor Trentalos, Latasha Gorman, nominated by Commissioner Beasley Pittman, Education Advisor Board, Juliette Gray Williams, nominated by Commissioner Beasley Pittman, Erin Gaul, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson, Fire Rescue Advisory Committee, Amanda Chalfont, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson, Marine Advisor Board, Tyler Brunel, nominated by Commissioner Herbst, Bob Swindell, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson, Planning and Zoning Board, Jacqueline Scott, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson, Sustainability Advisory Board, Kelly Charles, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson, and since, uh, we, uh, published the, the resolution, we also received a few additional names, uh, Board of Adjustment, Samir Yajnek, nominated by, uh, Commissioner Sorenson, Downtown Development Authority, Charlie Ladd and Greg Bruton, those are both consensus, uh, nominated by Mayor Trentalos, and then Police and Firefighters Retirement System Board of Trustees, Dennis Hull, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson, and that rounds it out.
Okay, um, several people have signed up to speak. Are there any modifications or additions to be made here, or do you want to hear folks speak first? Want to hear folks speak first, okay. I'm going to call your names up in threes and just, uh, give you a couple of minutes to speak. Michael Chambers, Michael, you here? Michael Chambers, followed by Christopher Purceau, followed by Elijah Manley. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Michael Chambers, I'm looking at the, the charter revision board that is set forth, um, where Beasley Pittman had appointed the Judith, Judith Stern, who is actually a, who is actually a, um, lobbyist for the, for the county, and, uh, my question is, is that a chart, is that a conflict of interest for someone to serve who is, who appoint political persons to be in a position? I don't think, I don't think that she should be suited for that position.
Okay, all righty, thank you. Christopher Purceau, followed by Elijah Manley, followed by Donna Guthrie.
Good evening, everyone. I'm also opposing the, uh, R1 for the same reason.
When you say opposing R1, what do you mean by that?
Uh, sorry, for the person who's running, um, for the, for the district two and three, who are lobbyists.
Okay, all right, thank you. Elijah Manley, followed by Donna Guthrie, followed by, um, Devon Pettit. Well, I can't, I, I understand that, but what do you want, I, I'm, this is our, just, they're working on it. Can you hear me now a little bit better?
I think they mean the speakers. The speakers.
Okay, for, for me, it's working, can you, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, great. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Elijah Manley, and I am a resident of downtown Fort Lauderdale. Uh, I am here this evening to address item R1 regarding the appointment of board and committee members, specifically, I, uh, I, uh, wish to address my concerns about the proposed appointment of Judith Stern to the Charter Revision Board. Uh, first and foremost, I believe this appointment does not align with the needs or values of the city of Fort Lauderdale. The Charter Revision Committee is currently composed entirely of all white members with no representation from the African-American community. Uh, given that District Three is predominantly African-American, it is both appropriate and necessary to ensure that this board reflects the diversity of our city, uh, including an African-American, uh, voice on such a crucial and important committee, uh, would be such an important step, uh, for representation in this city. Uh, while I greatly respect Commissioner Beasley Pittman, who is doing a great job in the district, I acknowledge the importance of relationships and these appointments, I do have serious concerns about this nominee's ethics and this nominee's character, uh, these concerns should not be ignored. Uh, furthermore, I strongly believe that no lobbyist should serve on a city board, let alone one as significant after Charter Revision. Appointing someone who represents entities with business interests before this city raises substantial ethical questions and risks undermining the public trust. For those reasons, I urge this commission to reject the nomination of Judy Stern to the Charter Committee, Charter Revision Board, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Donna Guthrie?
Hi, good night, everyone. I'm Donna Guthrie, president of, of the Melrose Park Home and Association. I also have here a letter from Christine Jones, she couldn't make it tonight.
Okay.
And she is in opposition to the appointment of Judy Stern to the Charter Revision Board.
Okay, we'll take, well, the clerk will take that.
I'm in opposition to Judy Stern or anyone outside of District Three being on the, um, the Charter Review Board. We have looked at the appointees that, um, Commissioner Pittman has already appointed to boards, and I am at a loss to find out why, why aren't you appointing the folks that reside in District Three? Well, you know, the people that, that you're appointing, even on the, on the, um, planning and zoning, they don't reside in District Three.
If I can answer you, I'm having a challenge with, uh, my neighbors signing up, and I'm pleading, everywhere I go, I ask my neighbors to sign up, we explain the process, and because that no one is stepping up, my responsibility is to find someone who will, so that's the reason why. Is there a position that you would like to sign up for? I would love to appoint you.
Well, Christine, uh, Christine reached out to you to be on the Charter Revision Board, and she sent me, um, some information from you to her that you had already have someone else in mind, Christine Jones lives in Lauderdale Manor.
You're correct, and when she reached out, the position was already filled, so I couldn't enroll it back.
Okay, so she's still interested if you want to appoint her, and there's other folks, um, that would like to be on the boards, if you, if you'd like to consider me, give me a call and we'll talk.
No, you need to give me a call.
Okay, you're the elected official, hello, you're the elected official, I'm the citizen, you work for me, I do not work for you, so that's how, that's how that works.
Ms. Guthrie, you know, I have much love for you, I have so much love for you.
So there's, 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 there's what, there's the difference between us, when I'm the president of the Melrose Park Home and Association, I don't get paid, I reach out to everybody, I go, I call them, so I don't wait for them to call me. So, as it stands, I oppose any lobbyist being on, um, any city boards, and I would urge you, when you're doing this, to find people that live in District Three, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, before you walk away, just let me address what you said. I am one who reach out to my neighbors as many as those who we, um, will accept calls from me, again, I'm asking my neighbors all over the district to please, sign up, be a part of what we're doing, that's who I am, and, and, no, 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 I allowed you to talk, let me finish, okay, allow me to finish. Again, unity in the community is what we need, we need to come here and present before the whole city that District Three is on one accord, and I invite you to join us, to be on whatever committee you like, the process is for you to let us know, you sign up, you won't even take a phone call from me.
That's not true, because you've never called me, and I've served on two boards within the city, I've served on, um, Parks and Sustainability, and I didn't reach out to anyone, Carlton Moore called me, and Barbara the Boz called me, thank you for your time.
Mister, um, Ms. Guthrie, thank you, thank you, no comments from the floor, no comments from the floor, thank you very much.
Is, uh, Mr. Pettit here? Is Bevan Pettit? Okay, how about Yolanda Spence? Yolanda Spence? I'm sorry, I can't, I can't, uh...
Hello, good evening, my name is Yolanda Spence, and I also agree with Donna that we should elect people that lives in District Three. Thank you.
Okay, uh, is there anyone wish, anyone else wish to speak on R1? Come on up. Is that you? Okay. Okay.
Hello, so I've heard everything about the person elected.
Your name is?
My name is Alola, my last name is Pahula, you can call me Lola.
Okay, Lola.
Uh, my dad is, never mind, he's Army, I'm Army, I'm not, I'm just a brat. Uh, so, I have a person, uh, that lives in Flo or Society, his name is Dallas, his last name is Gentee Berg, uh, he's not, he's not been elected yet, I think he'd be great, he went to the Naval Academy, um, he is from Fort Lauderdale, uh, he's a really good guy.
You, you, for which position are you recommending?
Commissioner, like, the one that Judy's running for? No, can't do it anymore?
What, wait, for Charter Revision Board?
Uh, any board, he just, he's, he's a, he's, he's a linebacker for Naval Academy, uh, he graduated in twenty-two, uh, yeah, so Dallas, uh, Gentee Berg, please.
Okay, thank you. Nobody else? Oh, there's one more? Oh, okay, what is your name? Want to go in front of the microphone? And, and then is, make sure it's on.
Yeah, it's on.
Okay.
Yes, Bevan Pettit, good night.
A little bit closer, a little bit closer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bevan Pettit, tonight, I did sign up at the front, so I don't know how I went amiss. Yes, my, I oppose, um, to anyone that does not live in District Three, represent, representation should be people who lives in the district. I feel that, um, our issues would be understood, and, um, no lobbyist who does not, should not be serving on the city of Fort Lauderdale board.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? Okay, yes, Commissioner.
Okay, I'm going, if we could, if we can have the city clerk explain the process of how anyone in the city can, um, sign up to be appointed to a board, I believe that that needs to be shared with our neighbors so they can understand the process, uh, how anyone who desires to be selected for a committee or a board, that, how they can sign up for that process to be appointed.
So, we, on, on the city clerk's page, we, we have it listed there to sign up to speak, or to sign up, sorry, not to speak, but to, uh, to apply for any boards that they wish, whether they're full or not, because we, people always drop off, so they can, uh, they can sign up at any time and, and apply, so their names are on the list. apply for any boards that they wish, whether they're full or not, because we, people always drop off, so they can, they can sign up at any time and, and apply, so their names are on the list. We work with Strategic Communications from time to time. When we do have a lot of vacancies, we will send out announcements with links to get directly to it as well. So we do outreach as well.
Okay, thank you. And just for the record, far as appointing and selecting, looking for individuals in District 3, I do my due diligence with that. We send out that request on every newsletter that goes out quarterly. Whenever I'm with a homeowners association, I put that information out. Also, at each pre-agenda meeting, I put the information out, having requests for anyone who desires to volunteer to be a part of this process. That's what I want. I don't want anyone in this room to feel like I'm doing anything other than that. We are welcoming everyone to be a part of District 3. I don't believe in separating the district. That's what I'm standing on. We are one district. So I need your help. I'm not trying to avoid anyone. I will not avoid anyone. I need you. We need each other. So with that being said, if you have recommendations, you have a name for me, because I don't know everyone. I can't call and say, hey, you, you do this, and I don't know your qualifications. But let's do this together, because I'm open, because I want District 3 to survive and thrive. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else have any?
Excuse me, yes, please.
I'm sorry.
First, I must say thank you guys for all you're doing in our community. We really appreciate all your efforts, okay? I, I'm strongly emphatically against having this Ms. Stern on the board representing District 3. The reason being, there are individuals who are capable, but like Ms. Beasley said, maybe they did not reach out to her, but now we know. They do not, she does not belong in the district. She should not represent the district. Representation matters. We need individuals who are among the family or the community to represent us. And Ms. Beasley said she made outreaches and no one did, but now it's open. Others who are interested can get the opportunity to be considered, but emphatically, no, absolutely not. Representation matters, and we, the people, thinks that we should find somebody in our community. So folks, you need to step up who are interested in the position so that you can represent District 3. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on, on R1? Okay, anyone from the commission who wishes to speak?
Well, I, I have a procedural question here, so this is a little bit different than usual, so either Dwayne or David. If we want, there's a lot of names proposed for us this evening throughout those four or five pages. If we want to pull one, what's the procedure for us to pull one for discussion and a vote?
Dwayne, just correct me if I'm wrong, but if, I guess you would introduce it minus names if you wanted to?
You can introduce a resolution. If you want to subtract the name, we can do that, or?
So, so the resolution is prepared with an exhibit that has all of the names, and so you would adopt it with the exhibit modified or amended to exclude the name in question, and then move forward with passing the resolution, and then a, a second resolution can be considered with that, that name.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I, I would like to propose that we do that resolution with all of the names that are proposed with the exclusion, with the exclusion of Judith Stern for Charter Revision Board.
My question, I don't recall. You helped me remember. You know, we, we've done much in these last couple of weeks. Have we passed a ordinance or that indicated that lobbyists could not be on our boards?
We have not yet, no.
Okay.
We gave, I believe we gave direction to the city attorney by consensus to draw that up for us, to come back if I remember correctly.
That's correct. You asked me to look into a number of boarding committee issues that I will be, be bringing back with language at a future conference meeting.
Okay, and with that being said, was it identified how many lobbyists are sitting currently on other existing boards? Because it's being presented that this doesn't happen in our city.
We haven't completed our, our research on that issue.
Okay, so with that being said, does that indicate that we have on other boards lobbyists sitting at this date?
I don't know. Good question. I don't know if we have any other lobbyists per se on other boards, or even on this board. I don't think so.
Okay, if we can't, in my opinion, if we cannot define that, I don't see how we can implement that tonight. Because if that's the case, everybody else needs to be removed immediately.
Could, Mayor, could I?
Go ahead.
Present a, an addition, an amendment to this resolution? I'm interested in serving on the MPO, and I know we, but I think there's an opening right now.
There is. Did you, did you mention appointments to the MPO?
We had two nominations for, they were reappointments of, for GDA, you said?
MPO.
My apologies. MPO, no, we have an open one for a, a commission.
Commissioner Sturman has vacated, right?
Correct.
So. No, no, Commissioner Stur, please, don't yell. I know what I'm doing. Thank you. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, Commissioner Sturman is vacated, the, the position, so yes, there is a vacancy, and is that something you would like to add as a resolution, on the resolution?
Yes. If.
So we, we normally do that one as a form of a motion. That's how we've done the, the MPO one in the past. So it wouldn't be, wouldn't be a part of this resolution.
Okay, it's separate.
Yeah, we can do a separate motion today or at the next meeting.
We can do an add-on at the end of the meeting. Okay, I didn't think of that. Okay. All right, so.
Mayor, I just want to chime in on this.
Yeah, please, please.
And, and this is about process. I, I think we have a, an obligation to respect the choices of the other district commissioners for whom they want to represent them on various boards and committees. You've appointed the gentleman who is my political opponent as a nominee on a board. If I wanted to take issue with that, I could object to that. I don't believe that's appropriate. If you think he's the right person to represent the city and you've appointed him, I'm not going to object to that. I don't think any of us should question the nominee of any of our other respective colleagues up here. I just think that's inappropriate, and I just want to be clear about that. I, I will not oppose anybody that is proposed by any of my colleagues.
I'll tell you the reason why I did that. In fact, I've done that.
Mayor, the, the, the point is, is not, I, I'm not asking for an explanation. I'm saying I respect your choice, and I think we should all respect the choices of our colleagues. I, I wouldn't question your choice, and I'm not questioning it in this instance. I'm saying if I were to question something, that's what I would question, and I just don't think it's appropriate for any of us to question whom our colleagues think is appropriate to represent their district on any of the boards that we have in the city. I think we need to show some deference to our colleagues in terms of their, their choices for all of our boards. That's all.
Okay. Come on, if you want to speak, you're welcome to come up to the podium. Otherwise, we can't entertain the, any comments from the, from the audience. All right, does anyone else have any other comments they'd like to make? Is there a resolution that's been introduced?
Um, before you go on with the resolution, I still have that question on the floor. How many other individuals are lobbyists? I know you say you don't have a number for me right now, but with that being said, I'm gonna concur that we do not vote on these members tonight, till we get an answer to my question. However, I make that motion.
But I, I just want to counter that. That's really not the issue for me here.
It's the issue for me because.
This has nothing to do with lobbyists on boards. This just has to, it's not, that's not what this is about.
That's, everyone that came up, they indicated that, first they said lobbyist, then they said that the person does not represent District 3. But to be honest, if you know the history, Ms. Stern has been on this board before I got here. So there's already been a problem with getting anyone from District 3 to represent. So that's the whole story, the backstory, and Ms. Guthrie, you should know that, because you, like you said, you represent the homeowners association, and you know how the, the city works. But with that being said, okay? I don't, I don't agree with removing my nomination from the motion or the resolution. I don't think that's right.
Okay, I understand that, okay. Vice Mayor, did you, did you introduce the resolution?
I believe I introduced the resolution with the exclusion of Judith Stern being appointed to the Charter Revision Board, correct? Is that what I said?
Yes, and, and just to clarify, I had the additional names that I read to add to the resolution.
So as amended.
So, right. So I just want to make sure, because it's the exhibit, and then the names that I also read prior to, and then with the subtraction.
With the exclusion.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Any further comments? You already had a chance to speak now. Okay. Anyone else wish to speak? All right, let's call, let's call the roll.
Okay, so the motion is?
The resolution is to, is to vote in favor of all the names nominated, and we'll sep- separating out Judy Stern, and we can, we can vote on her separately.
Wait, is that, no, that's, we're not voting on her separately. We're just not including her in the resolution of everyone we're appointing.
But if someone wants to introduce a resolution to, to, to entertain her membership on there, anyone can do that. But your resolution does not include her.
Correct.
Yeah, so, so, so for clarity, in your backup, you received a, a resolution and a, that had an exhibit of names.
Right.
And also, there were additional names that the clerk read into the record to be added to this resolution. The, the, what I understand, the resolution being introduced is that list of names excluding Judy Stern and the additional names being added.
Correct.
That is the resolution.
That's the resolution. All right, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Okay, as amended, a resolution to city commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, boarding committee members as set forth in the exhibit attached there too, and made a part here of Commissioner Herbst.
I think this is a horrible precedent. No.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
No.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalos?
Yes. Does anyone else want to introduce any other resolution?
I would like to introduce a resolution, appointing Judith Stern to the.
Charter Revision Board.
Charter Revision Board.
Okay. Does that need a second, or is that just a resolution?
So, so in, in the technical sense, the resolution has to be introduced in writing, so what I would suggest, Commissioner, is that it's, it's taken the form of the resolution that is in the backup, but that you have the exhibit that appoints Judy Stern to the Charter Revision Board.
Do you want to do that as an add-on at the end of the meeting? So you have the time to prepare it?
No, the, the commissioner introduced it. The, the resolution is a form resolution. That's a part of the backup. It's just the exhibit that's changing. So it's changing the exhibit to add Judy Stern as a.
Well, we already, we already voted on R1.
Understand.
Is this, this is not R1 anymore.
That's correct. So it's, it's a resolution that the commissioner is introducing to appoint a member to the Charter Revision Board. And what I'm suggesting is that the resolution, that the form resolution for adopting and appointing board and committee members be used with just a change to the exhibit to facilitate the resolution.
Well, however you feel it's appropriate, we'll follow your, your direction. I don't, I mean, that's fine, as long as we can respect the wishes of the commissioner to entertain the nomination of Judith Stern, and that's what we're doing now.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does anyone wish to speak on this item? This is a, a separate resolution which has been introduced by Commissioner Beasley Pittman to add Judith Stern as a, as District 3 representative on the Charter Revision Board. Ms. Guthrie, you want to come up and speak? Can you push the button on the bottom of the speaker?
Okay, okay. So I don't know what the deal is with Judith Stern to be representing District 3. We don't want Judith Stern. I know you're the commissioner, but the citizens don't want Judith Stern. The residents don't want her. So on this resolution, we're gonna say, no, we don't want Judith Stern to represent us. Find somebody within the district. Call Christine Jones. She already told me she'll do it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Okay.
Get out the noise, everybody. I'm listening to this going on back and forth about Judith Stern and this and that, but the ones that coming up, Judith, Judith Stern been on all the way around since I've been here. These other people coming up talking about her, she's not there. So whatever the position that she got going on, what they're going against, they show up at this time, and most time Judith Stern show up most all the time on different things. These one I see here now, I have never seen them before coming to these meetings here, unless something going for them at a certain time. So I just, I do support her on that part there. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Mark? Mark Dickerman?
Commissioners, Mark Dickerman, citizen of Fort Lauderdale. I'm not opposing or in favor of Judy Stern. I know Judy. I know her daughter. I consider them friends. What I am concerned about is the autonomy of commissioners to be able to appoint their, their people that they choose based on their qualifications. As you said before, Ms. Stern has served on that board, but my position here right now is neutral. I just, I support John, and I support Commissioner Beasley Pittman. This should be the decision of the commissioner, unless it comes from a, a requirement where the whole board has to make the appointment. But whether a person is a member of the district or not, if that person stood up and nobody else stood up, and the process has been the same for 25 years that I've been coming to commission meetings. If you want a position on a board, now I'm on my third board, Budget Advisory, Citizens Police Review Board, and currently Nuisance Abatement. I'm the one who approached my commissioner and asked that if I could be appointed to that. And that's the way the system works, and we have to work within the system, because the system is not perfect, but it makes the appointments easier on the commissioners and on the general public. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir. Again, please identify yourself.
My name is Michael Chambers. On the appointment of having Judith Stern on the, on, on that board, the fact is the matter is that there are many people out there who can represent, but they're not being called, or not, or, or not, we are basically underserved in our, in our district. And for us to have true representation, we need to have people who actually live in the neighborhood, who actually live in the district, who knows the district well and knows the problematic situations going on there, not someone from outside who may have had long, longstanding relations with the city and with, with the county. But the fact of the matter is that they don't understand what is going on. They don't live in the, in the district. So the representation should, representation should come from the district itself. People who live in the district and who knows the, the innuenders of a district.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I'll be brief. I, I do, I would like to eat tonight, so I'll be quick. But just to say, you know, this isn't, obviously, this isn't to attack Commissioner Beasley Pittman. I mean, when I used to live in District 3, she did reach out to me to join a board, so I do know she does take the opportunity to reach out to people to get them on board, especially the young people. But I will say about this particular nominee, Judith Stern, I do have a lot of questions about the ethics of this individual. If you go online and read some of the things she's written and how she's treated other people in the past, including myself. But this is, again, this is an all-white board. We're talking about the Charter Revision Board, and we don't have any African-American representation on this board. To me, that's just not, that doesn't make any sense, given the history of Fort Lauderdale. We deserve to have representation on this board. And again, lobbyists shouldn't be on this board, and this is not directed to the commissioner. This is directed at everybody. There should be no lobbyists on these boards. If you have business interests in front of the City of Fort Lauderdale, maybe you shouldn't be serving on these boards. If you would like to serve on the board, maybe resign from being a lobbyist and then serve on the board. That is a whole nother issue with the revolving door, but that's something that can, that can be worked on, especially when there's a resolution that will be in front of the city in the next few weeks to ban them. I don't think appointing someone, especially someone who is the biggest lobbyist in the city, who is not well-liked by a lot of people, I'll tell you that for sure, shouldn't be on the board. So again, that's it, not to beat up on any commissioner here or any mayor. I think you're all doing a fabulous job for your districts, but this particular nominee doesn't represent the City of Fort Lauderdale. She represents her business interests. the City of Fort Lauderdale, she represents her business interests.
Could I ask a question? You, you bring up an interesting point. It, it's one that I've actually touched on before whenever this has come up. So I, I concur with you. I think, you know, if we're gonna look at that, I, I like consistency, and so you said that nobody who has business interests in the city should serve on a board. So we've got a lot of folks that are developers, business owners in the city, should all of them be restricted from serving on a board? So if you don't, if you own any business in the City of Fort Lauderdale that may come up in front of the city, are you ineligible to serve on a city board?
Well, just to clarify, what I said was if you're a registered lobbyist-
No, no, you also said if you have business interests in the city. I, you specifically said that, I picked up on it, and that's why I'm asking you the question. So if I have a business, hold on, let me finish. If I have a business interest in the city, am I excluded from serving on a city board?
If I can finish.
Okay.
What I said was if you're a registered lobbyist representing somebody that has business interests in front of the city, that's a completely different thing-
Okay.
-than owning a business. Anybody can own a business, I can open up an ice cream shop down the street, I can be on the board. But what I'm saying is someone, a lobbyist is completely different from someone that just owns a business. You're a lobbyist, you're getting paid money to represent the interests of that individual, which may not be in the interests of the city or the residents.
Okay, let me ask you another question now. If I'm a business owner that hires lobbyists, can I serve, can I serve on a city board?
Perhaps, maybe it's, that's a conversation you could have with the city, but we should have that sit, that conversation.
No, I, I've, I've asked this question before of a number of people, and I'm kind of interested in your perspective because you've got a strong animosity towards lobbyists. What about people that hire lobbyists? So are they equally as guilty in your mind?
I think, because I'm an incredibly consistent person, I think that's a conversation that's worth having, and I think that the city should have that conversation.
But you don't have an opinion about it today?
About this particular?
About, about that question that I just asked. You don't have an opinion, you think we should talk about it some more, but you don't have an opinion yet.
Yeah, people hire lobbyists, people do hire lobbyists, and I think that could be an issue, and that's a conversation worth having. But again, as I said, if you're representing someone with business interests in front of the city, you shouldn't be serving on the board. Hiring a lobbyist is completely different, everyone hires, I mean, you're in downtown, lot, they, people hire lobbyists, but being a lobbyist is, is completely different from a business owner hiring a lobbyist. You're being paid, I don't know how much Ms. Stern makes, I'm assuming a lot of money. You'll get, she getting paid money by those folks, she's indebted to those folks, obviously. If you're a lobbyist, you're representing a small business, or you're representing a, a big firm, you're indebted to those people. That's the definition of, that's what lobbying is. So I don't know why we are confused about this or this is somehow confusing to anyone. You're a lobbyist, you shouldn't be serving on a city board, not the Charter Revision, not the planning and zoning, not the Police Review Board.
Okay. Thank you, Elijah. Yes, please reintroduce, please reintroduce yourself.
My name is Donna. I am floored at the audacity that we're saying, forget the lobbyists, I'm not into all of that stuff. What I'm saying is this, the audacity to think that we cannot have somebody within our district to represent us, and that Ms. Stern is the most qualified person to represent us. I say nothing about lobbyists. I am saying is that we should revisit vetting individuals in District Three. There is not one African-American on the committee if we bring Ms. Stern in. Put an African-American in that represent the community. What is so ridiculously crazy about that idea? Representation matters. We do not want her, we want somebody that lives in our district. Period. I mean, I have no issues with Commissioner Beasley, I think she's doing the best she can, but she must revisit this. We do not want somebody who's outside of our district. That's it. Period.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this resolution? Didn't you just speak on this resolution?
I do have a question.
I'm sorry?
I have a question.
All right, well, just sit down right now, this is not question, answer, period.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so there's a resolution been introduced. There's a resolution's been introduced to appoint Judith Stern to the Charter Revision Board. Please call the roll.
A resolution, the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, board and committee members as set forth in the exhibit attached here too and made a part here of. Commissioner Herbst?
Again, I respect the right of the district Commissioners to choose their own appointees to board, so in that respect, the answer is yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
No.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
No.
Mayor Trentalles?
No, and the resolution is, is not approved. Moving on to R2, Resolution approving a federally funded subaward and grant agreement for DR 4834 Hurricane Milton and delegating to the City Manager the authority to execute the agreement and any related documents and to approve and execute any modifications of the agreement. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
It's been introduced. Any questions with regard to R2? There being none, please call the roll.
A resolution, City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a federally funded subaward and grant agreement in Hurricane Milton, DR 4834, with the State of Florida Division of Emergency Management delegating the City Manager the authority to execute the federally funded subaward and grant agreement and any related documents and to approve and execute any modifications of the federally funded subaward and grant agreement providing for severability and effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and R2 is now approved. Moving on to R3, Quasi Judicial Resolution for a Site Plan Level Two Development Permit and Alternative Design and Affordable Housing Density Incentive Requests, 650 North Andrews LLC. Anyone wishing, uh, anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the Commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Herbst, do you have any disclosures?
Um, yes, I, I met with Ms. Beasley.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Meeting with Ms. Stephanie Toothaker.
I met with Ms. Toothaker, Vice Mayor.
Uh, site visit, and on December 9th, 2024, met with Stephanie Toothaker and Maya Berkowitz.
And Commissioner Sorenson?
Met with applicant.
Okay. Um, Ms. Toothaker, do you want to give a presentation?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner Stephanie Toothaker, on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Berkowitz, the owner, developer, is, is here along with the, the architect. I'm happy to give a presentation or I'm happy to answer any questions.
Um, what, it doesn't work that way. You have to sign up, you are signed up already on this, so I got you, I got it, just be patient, be patient. You redhead people are all very, you very anxious people, so. Okay, um, does anyone have any questions with regard to this, to this item? Okay, uh, well, let's hear what Lola has to say.
Okay, thank you.
So where is this site? Is it on Andrews? Yes.
Yes.
There's a lot of high-rise going up at Andrews, and there was a commercial accident at Andrews, so I'm just-
Andrews in what?
Andrews where the bridge is.
Where the bridge is? What bridge? There's no bridge.
Oh, my God, there's so many bridges.
Oh, Andrews Avenue Bridge?
Yes.
This is nowhere near that.
Oh, okay, 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 I'm good.
Sorry, no, it's okay.
I'm good.
It's okay. Okay, is there anyone, anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? There being none, would someone please move to close public hearing?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and, uh, public hearing is now closed on R3. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
The resolution has been introduced, please call the roll.
And that's for approval, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. A resolution, the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving issuance of a site plan level two development per, permit for an alternative design that meets the overall intent of the downtown master plan for the development of a 14-story, two-tower, 257-unit, uh, through the, uh, development, 257-unit through the application of affordable housing density incentives, mixed-use residential and commercial development located at 650 North Andrews Avenue, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, in the Downtown Regional Activity Center, City, Urban, Village Zoning District. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and that resolution is now approved. Moving on to R4, a quasi judicial resolution vacating 15-foot wide, 3,563-square-foot utility stormwater and drainage uses governmental agency and vehicular and pedestrian access easement. Phew. Also at 650 North Andrews Avenue, anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, the Commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Herbst, do you have any, just any, any disclosures?
Yes, again, I met with Ms. Toothaker on this.
Okay, and Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Again, Ms. Toothaker.
Okay, same with me, I met with, uh, Ms. Toothaker, Vice Mayor.
Same disclosures as R3, thank you.
And Commissioner Sorenson?
The same, Ms. Toothaker.
Okay. Try to speak with your microphones on.
The same, Ms. Toothaker.
Okay. Okay, um, I have two people have signed up to speak, Harriet Gregory and Tonya Edwards. You all still here? Ah, come on, I'm sorry? You're good? Okay. Anyone else wish to speak? Someone like to move to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and public hearing on R4 is now closed. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Resolution's been introduced for approval?
For approval.
Please call the roll.
A resolution, the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, vacating a portion of that certain 15-foot alley easement vacated and retained as utilities governmental and emergency ingress and egress easement in official records book 26690, page 282, and also being a portion of that certain utilities drainage governmental and emergency vehicular and pedestrian access easement recorded in official records book 28950, page 1612, all of the public records of Broward County, Florida, located west of northeast First Avenue, north of northeast Sixth Street, east of North Andrews Avenue, and south of northeast Seventh Street, all said lands being in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and R4 is now approved. Moving on to PH1, Public Hearing, Quasi Judicial Resolution approving a waiver of limitations at 357 Idlewild Drive for one concrete floating dock and one set of triple pile clusters. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, the Commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Herbst, do you have any disclosures?
Hold on, I'm trying to, come back around to me, I want to double check this one.
Okay, Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Um.
Let me come back to you.
I spoke with someone, but I don't know if they were a neighbor.
Oh.
So I don't.
You don't remember? Okay.
Yeah, oh.
All right. I had a communication with, uh, Romney Rogers, Vice Mayor.
Uh, just a site visit on, this is PH1?
This is PH1.
That's it, just a site visit.
Okay, and Commissioner Sorenson?
None that I know of.
So, so Mayor, that's a good question, does the, does the conversation with, with Romney need to be disclosed? Is he?
Yeah.
Okay, then, yes, I-
He, he represents.
I had a conversation with, with Romney Rogers as well.
Okay.
That was the one thing I wasn't sure about.
Okay, sure.
And that's my disclosure then, Romney, um-
Romney Rogers.
Romney Rogers. I didn't know if his position is a neighbor or a lobbyist, I didn't know.
He's not a neighbor.
Just a conversation.
He is, he is a man of the city, but he's not a neighbor.
Okay.
I didn't know if he was registered as a lobbyist on this particular issue. I don't know if he represents the next.
But his son Cam is-
Hang on, Mayor, so I'm sorry.
We had just checked, uh-
Do you want this?
Sorry. We had just checked the lobbyist registrations, and we do not have one for him.
So he is not registered as a lobbyist?
Yeah, but, but for clarity, when you're, when you're disclosing, you're disclosing with any, conversations you have with anyone on the item, the purpose for disclosure is because it's a quasi judicial process and you need to inform the applicant of, or, you know, opponents or proponents of the item of any additional information that you received outside of the hearing, and that's the reason for the disclosure.
So anybody I may have spoken to randomly about this item, if I happen to be talking to anybody on the street and it's kind of come up for conversation-
If, if they're stating their opinion on this item, yes, you should disclose it.
Okay. Now, and just to follow up on that, so, um, Mr. Witten, who is on the Marine Advisory Board, I happened to ask him the question during my pre-agenda meeting, because he's now in District One, does that need to be disclosed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I did ask him a question relating to this during the meeting, so yes, I'll disclose that as well, thank you.
Okay. Anything further? There being none? Okay, those are the disclosures. No one has signed up to speak. Anyone wish to speak on this item? There being none. Someone like to move to close public hearing?
So moved.
Been moved, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, um, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Close public hearing. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, public hearing's now closed. Would someone like to introduce the PH1 as a resolution?
Introduced.
To approve?
To approve.
Please call the roll.
A resolution, the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, pursuant to Section 47-19.3 of the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations granting a waiver of the limitations of ULDR Section 47-19.3C and D to permit Larry Danielle and Kathy Danielle, husband and wife, installation of 160-foot plus or minus by eight-foot plus or minus floating concrete dock and one set of relocated triple pile cluster extending a maximum of 61 feet, four inches plus or minus into the adjacent basin of New River Sound, such property being located at 357 Idlewild Drive, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and more particularly described below, subject to certain terms and conditions, repealing any and all parts of resolutions in conflict here with them providing for defective date. Commissioner Herbst?
A couple of questions before we move forward on this. Couple of questions before we move forward on this, so I know when I talked, so apparently the Marine Advisory Board approved this unanimously, but I do have a question for Mr. Dunkel, Mr. Dunkel. Thank you, Bob, so I understand that we're asking for a waiver, and I've been advised that this is a waiver that we are not able to grant, can you comment on that, please?
Uh, you're confusing that with PH2.
Is that PH2, thank you, okay. I, I didn't realize that there were two Romney issues, so I apologize.
Bob, did you say PH2? Yeah, that's the next one.
Okay.
Then, then.
That's the one that Romney represents.
All right, then, then hold on, so Mayor, did, did you talk with Romney on this one? Am I confused?
I don't think Romney.
You know what?
I'm confused, you're right, I think it was PH2. But nonetheless, I disclosed it, and it's better to be safe than sorry.
I don't think Romney, Romney doesn't represent the person in Idlewild.
Okay, I get that, I, I'm mistaken, so there are, there are technically no disclosures.
I'm, I'm glad we clarified that, because I was a little concerned. Thank you, Bob, thank you, Mayor, thank you, everybody.
All right, so let's, let's move forward on the vote.
And, and, and I clarify then, all of my disclosures are, I did still speak with Mr. Witten, but not with Mr. Rogers on regards to the site.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
What's the question?
For approval.
Yes, and I did not speak to Romney Rogers.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Um, first, for clarity, for PH1, I did not speak with Romney. I am voting yes in regards to this PH1.
Thank you. Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tullis?
Yes, and PH1 is now approved. Moving on to PH2, public hearing, quasi judicial resolution approving a waiver of limitations at 1414 Southeast 12th Street, number 2C, slip 11, for one floating vessel platform. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Now, Commissioner Herbst?
Everything I said before. So yes, for, for the record, I spoke with Mr. Witten and I spoke with Mr. Rogers.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Mr. Rogers.
Same with myself. Vice Mayor?
On December 16th, 2024, I spoke with Ellen Bogdanoff, and today, December 17th, I did speak with Romney Rogers.
Commissioner, Commissioner Sorenson?
Thank you, Romney Rogers, Cam Rogers, Ellen Bogdanoff, and many neighbors.
Why didn't Ellen speak to me, I feel left out, so, all right, I'll have to talk to her. Okay, several people have signed up to speak. Start with you, Mr. Dunkel.
Duane, let me just clarify, if we've spoken to many neighbors, are, are you expecting a, a full list?
Well, technically, you're supposed to include them, but.
Well, I'd, I'd like to ask, thank you, Mayor, I just want to hear from Duane.
Yes, the, the. Who do you want, who do you believe more?
Who do I believe more on this?
You're the city attorney, huh?
The city attorney.
A practicing attorney.
The reason for the disclosure is so that the applicant can actually question you more about what type of conversation or evidence you receive from those individuals, they want to know what you may be potentially prejudiced by, and that's the whole reason for the disclosure, to make the applicant aware of the additional evidence that's not presented at this hearing that you've considered. So that, that would be important, the identity of the individuals that you speak with.
So I think we should add a phrase here, commission will announce any site visits, communications, influencers, or experts. So what do you want to say, Commissioner Sorenson?
So then, yep, I'm gonna need some time to share with you all the folks that I've talked about, and that includes emails, text messages?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, so it's gonna.
Well, I'm assuming that emails are all public record anyway, so do they need to be further disclosed? It would be anybody that's not already captured within our other.
So, so in the past, we've allowed the commissioners just to state that they've received numerous emails or emails on, on a topic, and, you know, the, again, the applicant can explore or investigate further what, what that means, or obtain copies of those if they so desire.
Okay, so.
So you could just say numerous emails.
Sufficient, numerous emails, text messages, communications, thank you. Go ahead, Bob.
Bob Dunkel, Assistant City Attorney, I want to start off with just a brief introductory note on this. If y'all remember when we had Hemingway Landings in front of us, I think two, two meetings ago, there were a number of questions being posed, you ended up adopting a resolution that granted a waiver for all 21 of the, of the pilings. They, we continued to have discussions with regard to potential violations there. We had discussions with Jim McGruder and Cam Rogers on Friday, and one of the things that came out of that was a, was a notation that the, this floating vessel platform extended more than 30% of the width of the canal, of the waterway, and that caused me to look at 8-91, which is a prohibition that says vessels may not extend more than 30% of the width of the canal. So you end up embarking upon a, a journey of, is a floating vessel platform a vessel? I looked into the definition in 327 and also in 8-1, it is not a, a vessel. However, Cam Rogers, whether it was this morning or yesterday morning, raised an issue that had never been raised before, it was never raised at the Marine Advisory Board where notices went out to some 90 people. First time I'm hearing of it was when we spoke the other day, he is correct. When you look at 47-19.3, which sets up the 25 feet for a waiver, mooring structures, not including mooring or dolphin piles, shall not extend into the waterway more than 25 feet, 25% of the width of the waterway or 25 feet, whichever is less, as measured from the property line. Then you get down to 4720, 4719.3E, which gives you the power to grant a waiver, and there is a clause in there that has gone unnoticed for quite some time. In no event, this has to do with granting a waiver, in no event shall the extension exceed 30% of the width of the waterway, and no variance may be approved by the Board of Adjustment or other agency permitting an extension beyond the 30%. I'm here before you to say mea culpa. We did not see that when we were reviewing it, and even a double mea culpa, because I was the one that drafted that sentence in there when we were adopting the ULDR back in 1997. Be that as it may, there are questions, the, the topographic survey that y'all saw at that last meeting measured 118 feet wet face to wet face, not property line to property line. The applicant will speak more of that, also, there are some easy cures if this does violate the 30%, but I'll let the applicant and the others speak to that, I just wanted to give you that background and a mea culpa on my part.
Mr. Dunkel, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with the term wet face.
Wet face is where the water runs up against the seawall.
Okay.
That's not always the same as where the property line is.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
All right, so, hang on, Bob, just before you, so a couple of questions, okay. So in the newfound, or the newly rediscovered language, summarize that newfound language in a, a sentence.
Yeah.
What can't exceed 30% of the width of the canal?
This floating vessel platform.
Okay.
Or any other dock structure.
Okay.
The purpose behind that is to keep 30% on one side, 30 on the other, leaving 40 in the middle for navigator, for a navigational channel.
Great, thank you, that makes sense, next question, what is the measurement from property line to property line?
We do not know for certain, I will let the applicant amplify on that.
But it's wet face, it's wet face.
Wet face, not property line, that's correct. In other words, if, I'll give you a hypothetical, if property line to property line were 122 feet, you can grant the waiver because it's then less than 30%.
Right, but, but is the, was that suggests that the, that the seawall goes beyond the property line?
It could go beyond, or it could be farther upland.
Okay, but in this case, it's farther be, beyond?
I don't know, because I'm not a surveyor, and I don't think that it has been, I don't think it has been surveyed property line to property line, so the 118 is iffy.
So.
It may be correct, it may not be.
So, so, but the, but the measurement that you're, that you've identified here is wet face to wet face, correct?
Yes, yes.
Regardless of the property line?
Right.
Okay.
It should be property line to property line.
It's 118?
Wet face to wet face.
Yeah.
But that's also at the northernmost extremity of the property, as you go farther south, the, the, the width of the waterway can be different, and you don't have, you don't have a measurement coinciding with this number slipped number 11.
So should we, should we defer this item then, so that you can come back to us with facts?
You're jumping forward to the end of the story.
I'm gonna just cut to the chase.
Yeah, I would like to cut to the chase, too.
I have, because, because the applicant has flown here from California at great expense, one of the things that I gave some thought to was adopting a resolution that would grant the waiver, and I'm gonna read to you a modified version of the effective date, that this resolution shall not be effective until A, the applicant on or before February 15, 2025, provides satisfactory evidence from a licensed survey proving to the city surveyor that the floating vessel platform does not extend more than 30% of the width of the waterway as measured from property line to property line in accordance with ULDR 4719.3C and D. Subsection B, if proper proof is timely provided to the city surveyor, then the rest of it is the way it usually goes, you got to go ahead and give it back. There are two ways that you could look at this, number one, he could lop off two feet of the, of the floating vessel platform, or a survey could show that as it is, it doesn't extend more than 30%.
So it's 30, it's 30% from the property line, not the wet face?
Correct. And the only information we have is 118, wet face to wet face, on the extreme northern boundary of the property, not coinciding with what it is at slip 11.
What, what, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dan.
Sorry. It's, it's at your discretion as to whether you want to roll this over and come back, or whether you want to adopt this resolution, which would avoid the cost and expense of him flying back and forth to California, he would end up getting a surveyor to go ahead and get the property.
I just came from California, it's freezing there, so he's probably happy he's here.
Well, there's, okay, so there's, there's a couple, not only do you have to have the property surveyed on, you know, the north side, I think, he's on, you also have to have the property surveyed on the south side. Okay, Susan, or Chris Hooper, how do we normally determine property lines when the city is planning and doing so forth? Do we, do we depend on a homeowner to provide the survey?
And Chris is gonna, it looks like he's coming up to answer the question, and I know we do employ a city surveyor.
Yeah, so Commissioner, for any application that comes in from a private entity for a development permit or building permit, we would rely on the survey provided by the applicant.
By the applicant?
Right.
Okay.
So in this case, if somebody's requesting the deviation from the Marine Advisory Board, they would be the ones submitting the survey to us.
Okay.
And I would also add, that would need to be stamped and sealed by a licensed surveyor, the topographic survey was not.
Okay, yeah, I mean, Mayor, I, I just, I don't feel comfortable until we have surveys of both properties to come forward to, you know, appropriately evaluate this. I'm not, I don't feel comfortable passing a resolution with these added contingencies.
Okay, Mr. Dunkel, does that conclude your comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let me, let me allow the other people who signed up to speak, to speak, Cam Rogers, you want to speak?
Mayor, if you, if I may, they, it's a quasi judicial proceeding, I believe that the applicant should have the opportunity to first speak and then.
This is his representative?
This is his rep, okay.
No, I didn't say that, I said Mr. Rogers is his representative.
For the records, Mr. Rogers is opposition.
Oh, he's in opposition, oh, I'm sorry. And your name, sir, is?
Nicholas DiOrio.
Oh, Mr. DiOrio, okay, here we go.
Following up on Mr. Dunkel's initial comments, the one thing I did hear is that Commissioner Herbst had mentioned that Romney said you would not be able to approve this. I think my presentation will provide you with a path that you will see, that you will be able to approve it and legally approve it after you see the presentation. I'd like to present a PowerPoint, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor?
Go right ahead.
This is a photo of the floating dock.
Hold on a second, can we get this, okay, here we go.
All right. Photo of floating dock on the slide presentation will follow. Slide number one is an overview of Hemingway Landings Marina, lower right, you will see a floating vessel platform with a Zodiac-type vessel sitting on top, that is the subject slip in question.
Can, um, can you point that out to us, maybe on one of these screens here? So that's, that's the area we're speaking of? Got it. Okay, there's the arrow, okay.
Okay, this is, and a good point where you brought up about being the south side, this is from the Broward County property maps, shows where the property line is to the south, and then you see the floating vessel on the north. There is a faint white line that shows the property line on the north, there is a heavy red line that shows the property line on the south, it is clear that the property line is not the face of seawall, and therefore, as Mr. Dunkel explained, if you measure property line to property line, that will provide you with a path for approval. Measure distance, again, from the property line plotted on the southern parcel, across the canal, to the property line parted, plotted on the northern parcel, with a, and this may be difficult to see, with a measurement distance of 121.391 feet from property line to property line. Again, I 100% acknowledge that there is a document that shows face of seawall to face of seawall at only 118 feet, but again, the regulation and the code speaks of property line to property line. Going to the next slide, is strictly a calculation of taking the 121.391 feet times 30%, which we cannot exceed, and comes up with 36.4173 linear feet. My dock, as approved by the Marine Advisory Board, is 36.4 feet. Therefore, this provides you with a path for approval, that property line to property line is not exceeded.
So Mr. DiOrio, let me ask you this, you would think that the spirit of the, of the law is to provide for safe navigation, and that they, that the demarcation points were property line to property line, the fact that there's been an encroachment into the canal beyond the property line suggests that it's squeezing the navigable access by a couple of feet on each side. So wouldn't you think that the, the purpose and intent of the law was to ensure proper navigation, safe navigation, and that while it may not be consistent with the letter, the spirit of the law is that it's intended to provide some reasonable access through the middle of the waterway that is safe and navigable for, for boaters? By squeezing it the way, by a couple of feet, it, it puts that at risk. So I'm beginning to think that, you know, you're, what you're telling us is that we need to violate these property owners and make them take down their seawalls because they're encroaching into the waterway.
I'm not.
Well, that's our next step.
I'm, I'm not suggesting.
I'm suggesting that that's going to be the next step, because we have to make them take down their seawalls, they've, they've, they've trespassed into the waterway, they're not allowed to build into the waterway, they're only allowed to build up to their property line, and here we have a situation where we now have to tell them to take down their seawall. So those are choices that this commission is going to have to make, because more importantly than anything is the safety of people who use our waterways. And so, I, if there's a certain, there's a certain dilemma we have here, it's going to be a huge expense for these people to take down their seawalls, and I think it's a minor expense if you maybe cut off a foot and a half of your dock in order to be able to accommodate the situation. What are your thoughts?
My thoughts is that the commission, I think, is getting into a issue, and it may be a slippery slope, of saying it's always going to be face of seawall to face of seawall, because with obviously the level of the seawalls that have to increase, there is going to be continually conditions where the seawall can't be built on the same, either face or facade, and therefore may have to extend, and therefore the waterways are keep getting narrow, and I don't think the commission wants to get into, look at every approval that you've given, because now the seawalls are coming in because the seawalls have to come higher in order for flood control. So I, I.
Yeah, but navigation is really important to us.
I understand.
Safe navigation.
In 120 feet, sir, we're talking about this distance.
Right, and now you're narrowing it down 30% on each side, which gives us 40% in the middle.
40%.
Right, less than 40%.
And if you use the 118.
38%.
If you use 118, which is not the code, we're talking about, the dock extends that much beyond, whether the regulation will allow you to approve this.
I, I know what you're saying, I, I'm not saying that, what you're saying is wrong, I'm just looking at the larger picture here, and the larger picture here is, far as I'm concerned, is the safe navigable waterway, and if you're putting that at risk because you're, you're squeezing the navigable part less than 40%, that concerns me, and now that may be, it may be an imperative upon this commission to contact these neighbors and tell them they have to take down their seawalls.
Could I present the next slide that I had presented? This, I think, will address your issue. In the center of the photo, you'll see the subject floating vessel platform. You see a bright yellow line, which was the 25 feet, which is the line of the pilings all the way along the Hemingway Landing Marina. You see a blue, a green line, I'm sorry, which is the 30% line, and you see a blue line, which is the apparent bow of adjacent vessels extending way out beyond the 30%. Now, you and I can go up and down the canals of Fort Lauderdale and find the situation, and the commission is looking at my situation, where I am inches beyond the green line, and turning their head through the rest of the city at all of the projections beyond.
Well, touche, sir, but, but now you're telling me I have to go out there and cite each one of these vessels for violating our navigable waterways?
Mayor, they have been cited, is my understanding, my understanding, and that's going to be an issue in front of the commission, I think, there's concerns with many of these. Yeah, so, how did you question, how did you measure the width of the canal?
I'll go back, is a survey, I think, that did that?
I don't think so.
I plotted, I took the Broward County for the south and the north. I plotted the property line shown in the white line to the north and the red line to the south, then I took the measured distance, plotted on that from the Google measure, and came up with 121.39.
Okay, thank you.
As you can see, the red is clearly south of the face of seawall.
Duane, Susan, do we accept Google as a, a measurement tool in, in our planning and zoning?
We do not.
Okay, so that's my concern, is I, I believe you, that's how you measured, we, I just can't rely on Google in planning and evaluation, as, as good as you may be at, at Google, it's just not as reliable as a, as a survey, so that's just my concern.
Could I ask a question of, perhaps, Duane? So, a couple of things, first one is, so for, for these larger vessels that are out there, I, I. are out there, um, I, I thought I heard Commissioner Sorensen said that we are citing these vessels. What do we do? Help me understand how that works.
I would, I would have to defer to either Bob Dunkle or--
Mr. Dunkle.
In our meeting Friday, um, because we were talking about violation of the 30% rule, I had seen a previous aerial that showed as many as, I think, seven vessels that exceeded that. And I go, you want to go after this? We're going to have to go after all those other vessels. That aerial, I think, was taken in 2022. I believe that the number of vessels that exceed 30% is down to perhaps three. But at that meeting, I said code enforcement's going to have to go out and cite these folks, and, uh, however, however the code enforcement board mechanism works, they'll have to find new homes, or the fine will keep running.
So, so is that what that, basically, we'll have to remove them from those locations?
Yes, sir.
And rebirth them somewhere else?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Or, as you say, the fines accrue, and we know--
Continue to accrue.
--accrue rapidly, right?
Yes, sir.
And, and unlike a homesteaded property, you can't homestead your, uh, your, your vessel unless, uh--
Well, this is a limited common element of the upland unit, so it remains to be seen whether the code enforcement board lien would attach to an upland unit, which is homesteaded. Not homestead for tax purposes--
Right.
But homestead, yes.
Right, homesteaded for the lien purpose.
Right.
Okay, okay. Um, okay.
And I have no opinion as to whether you could go beyond code enforcement. That's not in my general wheelhouse.
Right.
Perhaps you can. I just don't know for certain.
Right. Okay. And, and then my next question is, so, as I understand waivers, they're optional, right? So, this is not, it is not incumbent on the commission to grant this. This is, a waiver is optional on our part, um, whether, you know, whether we deem it in the best interest of the city. Uh, is that the general?
Let me try to rephrase it.
Okay.
If there is a finding that it constitutes extraordinary circumstances, it's incumbent upon you to grant it. If, on the other hand, there's a finding that, no, this does not constitute extraordinary circumstances, then you can deny it. But, but, but this is more than a waiver. This is the 30% rule, which basically says you can't grant a waiver if it violates the 30% rule, which I think is something that remains to be seen with proper evidence.
With proper measurement. So now, my next question, of course, and you see where I'm going with that, is kindly define extraordinary circumstances.
Oh, come on. You have--
Just for the record--
You know it when you see it.
For, for, I know, it's, it's, it's like pornography. Just for the record.
I'm, I'm, I'm not going to subscribe to your definition, but I will follow the mayor. There's a long history--
Just a general, just a general sense, just, i- i- an overview of that, if, if you would.
This is a problem with which I have been, uh, wrestling for quite some time.
I, I know. You're, you're my resident expert.
I do not have a, a perfect answer for it.
Do we have an imperfect answer?
My recollection of, over the years, in the, the city of Fort Lauderdale is, I believe, there's probably only been two that have been denied. I remember a third up in Benita Bay, which went, uh, ran into a lot of opposition. They withdrew, and then they came back. It seems that the term extraordinary circumstances is skewed in favor of factors that benefit the property owner and don't necessarily evaluate impediments to navigation. That's the best answer I can give right now.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
So, Bob--
Yes, sir.
I didn't hear you in the resolution or ordinance say extraordinary circumstances. Is that implied throughout?
No, no, no. That's, that's in the resolu-, the main resolution in front of you.
But is it in the ancillary, where it says no waiver may be granted?
The effective clause that I drafted, that y'all don't want to take, that would have taken care of that circumstance. They would have been able to go, they would have been able to leave here and come back within, uh, the next 60 days with evidence satisfactory to the city surveyor that the 30% rule is, uh, is not violated. If they fail to come back, that effective clause also gave the authority to the mayor to immediately and forthwith enter a, a resolution of denial.
Hold on, Bob. I'm not, I'm not-- The existing resolution, they, on the books.
The one that's on the books in front of you, yes.
On the books in front of you, with the language stating that a waiver cannot be granted. Right?
It follows the text of the underlying ordinance, which, which says extraordinary circumstances. Yes.
Okay, so it does allow extraordinary circumstances?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Great. Tell me your name again.
Nicholas.
Nicholas. So, um, let's just, uh, uh, assume your measurements are correct. Great. Um, what is the, uh, challenge to getting a couple of surveys to ensure it's accurate?
Time and money.
Okay. 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 Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. DiOrio, is this your property? Is this--
Yes, sir.
Okay, this is your, your, okay. All right. Um, do you know a Mr. McGruder?
Yes.
He wants to talk too now. Mr. McGruder? You're just here to answer questions, okay? Are you a neighbor? Okay. Okay. Um, all right. So, we'll ask Cam Rogers. Would you like to speak? And Cam, you're representing the homeowners assoc-, the condo association?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, Commission, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to actually show a few pictures as well, if, uh, we could get, if that would be okay with you.
Please.
If we could flash up the, uh, first picture of the floating dock. Thank you. So, the, the whole goal of the board at this time is to bring the Marina back into compliance. We were, as Mr. Dunkle, uh, let you know, we were in front of you a few months ago, looking to do the same thing. Um, we are now taking the next step to bring this matter into compliance, and we'll be taking further steps going forward. Um, we, we, as you can see, uh, the marking here reflects the 25-foot line, uh, and then the darkened part there is the, is the, uh, portion that extends beyond the 25 feet. And then you see the mark, the mark, um, kind of at the end of the darkened space where the 30 feet, 30-foot line is. So, it, it extends not only beyond the 25 feet, which is permitted for this sort of, uh, docking device, uh, but it also exceeds the 30% of the waterway. If you wouldn't mind, so that, that's a total of 11.4 feet, uh, beyond, beyond the 25-foot limitation that the code allows for. If you wouldn't mind going on to the next slide, please.
How did the, how did the Marine Advisory Board, which is so hesitant to grant dock waivers, especially when it comes to impeding the, the, the navigable waterway, how is it that they unanimously approve this?
I'm not sure. I, I think that the actual survey was not reflected of that 30% portion.
Okay.
So--
All right. Proceed. Sorry to interrupt you.
As, uh, Mr. Dunkle recited to you, I just wanted to show you the portion of the code. It actually talks about the, um, the waiver that can be sought under the 49, 49-133C. However, it says, "In no event shall the extension exceed 30% of the width of the waterway, and no variance may be approved by the Board of Adjustment or other agency permitting an extension beyond the 30% limitation." So, it does say the width of the waterway. And I do agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that the width, the waterway is from seawall to seawall. And we actually have our survey that we provided, and it's been, been provided in, I believe, your, uh, information, is a seawall-to-seawall survey. Um, and so that reflects actually 118 feet, and 30% of 118 feet would actually get you to, uh, 35 feet. So, the 36.4 feet that, uh, Nick actually stated the length of his dock was, extends beyond the 30%. And, and--
Mr. Dunkle, how did you get, uh, Mr. Rogers is saying that it's the width of the waterway, and you're saying the waterway width is measured for property line to property line. Is there another section in the, in the ordinance?
Absolutely. You're, you're looking at 47-19.3E, which gives you the authority to grant a waiver under 47-19.3C.
Correct.
I read to you earlier.
Correct.
"Mooring's under C. Mooring structures not including mooring dolphin piles shall not extend into the waterway more than 25% of the width of the waterway or 25 feet, whichever is less, as measured from the property line, not the wet face." You, you, you can't read 47E without looking at C because it gives you the authority to waive the limitations of C.
Right, but--
You have to go back to property line to property line.
But then, then--
Same thing under 8-91. It talks about property line to property line.
Right. But, but then, but then that, that, uh, that, uh, that phrase and that, uh, requirement belies the intent of why we have that 30% rule.
That's the way it was drafted, and it's also drafted that way in 8-91 before the ULDR, property line to property line.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Rogers, you may continue.
Mr. Mayor, that, I, I, I understand what's being said, but this is talking about the 25-foot limitation. And so, a, a navigable waterway should not be impeded or encroached on by more than 30%. So, that's, that's what, that's what the board is taking the position on. Uh, it, it would be inappropriate. We believe that the, the commission to grant this waiver would actually put the board in a, in a precarious situation, um, because we don't want there to be potential liability to the board. Should there be a variance or, or a waiver provided, there be an accident, uh, related to this, this dock extending into the waterway, and then we come to find out by a, a savvy plaintiff's attorney that, that there's actual, this, this variance or waiver that was provided was not, was not, uh, accurate. So, we, we're, we think that it's important for, uh, to bring the, to bring the, the Marina back into compliance. Uh, we feel that the waiver would, should not be granted to that, this evening.
Can, can I ask a question?
Yes.
And I'm not sure who to direct this to. DeWain, Mr. Dunkle? Um, but since the Marine Advisory Board reviewed this item and voted on it in the absence of the new information, I think my recommendation would be twofold. One, that we have an accurate survey, and two, that we ask the Marine Advisory Board to reconsider it and then come back with their recommendation. I'd, I'd like them to have all the facts in front of them because their vote was taken without, without the full understanding of what the law says. I, I think it would be prudent to send it back to them for reconsideration with the new information.
I understand, and that's certainly at the discretion of the, of the tribunal. I, I would like to point out two things. Number one, should you grant a, a waiver, and it ends up in liability, DeWain, I cannot remember the name of the case, but it was like back in the early 80s, no liability on the city. Do you remember the name of the case? I--
Sorry, Bob, I don't.
Oh, okay. And, and number two, at the time the ULDR was--
He was five.
Very close to it.
At the, at the time that the ULDR was adopted, we already had 8-91 in the code, and that reads, "Boats, vessels, or watercraft moored or mooring structures shall not extend to more than 30% of the width of the canal or waterway measuring from the recorded property line." So, that's why the ULDR was drafted the same way, to, to modi-, uh, to amplify what you already had in Chapter 8 of the code.
I guess that was based on the assumption--
Other people may have drafted it differently.
I, that was based on the assumption that the city would not allow encroachments with, uh, with a structure into the waterway. So, that's another issue for another time.
The two of us have a difference of opinion on that? Because putting that seawall in, it's typically not right at the property line, and furthermore, it's part of the exercise of the repairian rights that goes along with the ownership, the ability to wharf out, and so on and so forth. So, you and I will agree to not agree on that.
We will, we'll agree to disagree on that.
Yes.
No one has, no one has the right, no, the repairian rights only give you right of access, not right of ownership or possession. And that's what a seawall does. It takes, it grabs the ownership and possession of a, of a, of a, of a waterway, whereas repairing rights is, only gives you right to access.
It gives you the right to wharf out, and wharfing out without a seawall is quite problematical.
Are you swearing at me? Wharfing-- Stop wharfing at me.
We're just continuing to not, to, to have a disagreement on that proposition.
Okay. All right. Uh, continue, Cam.
I think I've concluded.
You concluded your remarks?
Thank you, Commissioner. If there's any further questions, I'm happy to answer any.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? District Commissioner, what are your thoughts? I think Mr. Herbst also suggested deferring this until we get a, a full measurement. Is that also, I think you had originally suggested that too.
Yeah, I, I agree that a, a survey is just what we can rely on in standard practice for the city. So, I think that'd be, um, an important part of this, uh, of this analysis, um, to, to evaluate.
Okay. Um, all right. Well, are you, is that, so, motion to defer?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need a, do we need a specific date, Mr. Spence?
We can always, oh, now Bob is approaching, so--
Question, I, I may not have heard it correctly. Are you taking up Commissioner Hertz's proposition to send it back to the Marine Advisory Board before coming back here?
Well, it's, it's, uh, it's, uh, Commissioner Sorensen's, um, motion, so ask him.
Okay. Ms., Commissioner Sorensen, I'm asking you.
I'm, I'm open to sending it back to the Marine Advisory, um, but I also am just thinking about Nicholas's time and that it's gotten this far. Um, so, uh, I, I think I'm comfortable either way.
When is the, when does the Marine Advisory Board next meet? Does anyone know? Mr., Mr. Clerk? What is it?
I believe that's the first Thursday in January.
January 3rd.
January 3rd. So, our first meeting is when?
Now, that can't be a, that can't be the 3rd. If the 3rd, because we meet on January 7th, don't we?
January 3rd is a Friday.
It's a Friday.
Oh.
January 2nd is the Thursday.
Yeah.
And then we meet on the 7th.
If you are thinking of sending it back to the Marine Advisory Board, he would not have, this is Christmas time, holiday season. He would not have enough time to be able to get the surveyors to put the proof in front of the Marine Advisory Board that he would want to put in front of them.
Okay, so why don't we defer this to the 21st of January? But you're saying that the Marine Advisory Board will not be meeting until February 6th on this item?
If, that's what Andrew says. February 6th, yeah.
Yep. So, we'll have to pick it up on February 18th.
Understood. If that's the motion, yeah.
That's the motion?
Yep.
Yep. Okay. Okay, do I hear a second? Remove the seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst? Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House?
Yes, and the item has been deferred to, uh, February, what did I say, 18th?
Uh-huh.
Okay. All right. I don't know why it was brought to us before all these measurements were taken. I mean, all right. Thank you. Moving on to, uh, PH 3, Public Hearing Resolution finalizing the designating of real property located at 221 Northwest 6th Street and 610 Northwest 3rd Avenue, Fort Lauderdale 33311, as a brownfield area for rehabilitation and redevelopment pursuant to Florida's Brownfields Redevelopment Act. This is in, uh, Commission District 2. Um... A couple people signed, well... Are you dancing? Are you coming up to speak? Okay, Carla. Go for it.
I want to make sure, am I signing?
Yes, you signed it.
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to make sure y'all hear me. Oh, I know, two minutes. Okay. My name is Carla Roundtree. I live in District 2. I represent all of Fort Lauderdale. I want to say happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, celebrate Kwanzaa, and may each and everyone have a very prosperous New Year. So, on this agenda, I want to understand, what does brownfield mean? I know this is located on 6th Street--
Brownfield means it was a contaminated site, contaminated by some kind of industrial waste that has now been, that will, as, that will be, will be, or is, or has been rehabilitated so that it's, can protect human beings from the contamination.
So, all the contamination is, is out of the field?
Yes.
Okay. I don't need two minutes. Y'all have a great and prosperous New Year.
Okay, thank you.
You too, Carla.
Brett, you're just here for questions? Where's Brett Brumman? Oh, there you are. Okay, you're just here for questions, right? Okay. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Anyone have any questions on the commission? There being none, someone move to close public hearing?
So moved.
Been moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed on PH 3. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Resolution's been introduced. In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Please call the roll.
A resolution, City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, finalizing the designating of real property located at 610 Northwest Third Avenue and 221 Northwest Sixth Street, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, 33311, as a brownfield area pursuant to Section 376.80, Prens B, Florida statutes for the purpose of rehabilitation, job creation, promoting economic redevelopment, authorizing the City of Fort Lauderdale to notify the Florida Department of Environmental Protection of said designation, providing an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and Al, is this to be rehabilitated or has been rehabilitated?
I want to come up and answer that question.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. My name is Brett Brumman. I'm here on behalf of the contract purchaser of the property. It is in the process of being rehabilitated. There were some underground storage stinks that were removed. There's still some contaminated soil left over that will be addressed during the redevelopment process that'll likely kick off a little over a year from now.
Okay, great, thank you. Just wanted some clarification on that. Thank you so much. PH four, Public Hearing approving the issuance of a certificate of public convenience and necessity for CR Lifts LLC to operate one low-speed vehicle within the city of Fort Lauderdale. No one has signed up to speak? Anyone wish to speak on this item? There being none, someone move to close public hearing?
Moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and public hearing on PH four is now closed. Would someone like to?
It's a motion.
What is it?
It's a motion.
Oh, someone like to move the item?
Moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes. Why can't, Dwayne, why can't these be done administratively by the city manager? I mean, this, I mean, not that I'm looking for more work for the commission, but.
It would require, your ordinance calls for it, and it's a kind of a throwback from the days when we used to license taxis.
Yeah.
Right. We can revisit.
We should revisit that process.
Sure thing.
OFR one, this is the first.
Mayor.
Yep.
We have the CR seven, that was the public hearing.
Oh.
Yep.
CR, yes, so CR seven, which is now PH five?
Yes.
Thank you for reminding me. This is a public hearing, Resolution approving the transfer of city-owned property located at 1200 Northwest Third Street in the Northwest Progresso Flagler Heights Community Redevelopment Area and 1145 Northwest Fifth Avenue in the Central City Community Redevelopment Area to the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency. This is a public hearing to approve the transfer of two city-owned properties to the CRA subject to the following conditions. One, the CRA shall accept title to the properties, subject to all title defects and other adverse matters and conditions. Two, any development or disposition of the properties shall be consistent with the NPF Plan and Chapter 163, Part Three of the Florida statutes. Three, the city shall convey title by quick claim deed. Four, all fees, costs, and expenses associated with the transfer, including payment of outstanding bonds, shall be borne by the CRA. Five, the CRA shall accept title to the properties, subject to the interests of minority builders under an expired lease and any current subleases acknowledging parties in possession. Is there anyone wish to speak on this item? There being none, do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and public hearing on PH five is now closed. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
The resolution in favor has been introduced.
In favor.
A resolution, City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving the transfer of city-owned property located at 1200 Northwest Third Street in the Northwest Progresso Flagler Heights Community Redevelopment Area and 1145 Northwest Fifth Avenue in the Central City Community Redevelopment Area to the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency for public purposes pursuant to Section 8.02 of the City Charter, subject to terms and conditions authorizing the proper city officials to execute the conveyance in terms and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor-
Commissioner Sorensen? Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and PH five is now approved. Moving on to OFR one, this is the first reading of an ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, enacting a new subsection of the city's Code of Ordinances regarding public establishing a notice procedure for reporting violations of public camping and public sleeping. Anyone sign up to speak? Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
We don't need to close public hearing?
No.
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, this is an ordinance approving, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Please call the roll.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, enacting a new section 16-33 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, entitled Public Camping or Sleeping Notice Providing for Correction of Scrivener's Errors Providing for Severability and Providing for an Effective Date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and OFR one is now approved on first reading. We have a walk-on. So, walk-on resolution regarding urging Broward County, the Broward Metropolitan Planning Organization, and the Florida Department of Transportation to recommend construction of a tunnel as the locally preferred alternative for the commuter rail train crossing the New River in the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Introduced. Anyone wish to speak on this item?
I can't hear you. Is that the bridge by Flo? Is it by the?
Yes.
No.
That's the area by society and the river that we're looking to support a tunnel option. Okay? You didn't sign up to speak. We can talk later if you have something to say. Okay. Okay. Anything further on this?
So, my only comment on this, Mayor, is I think our original resolution that we had adopted and the second resolution that we adopted are the ones, in my mind, that make the most sense. I think we all agree that in a perfect world, if funding were not in question, that the tunnel would be the preferred option. But again, I think the commission in both of the other resos that were adopted recognize that that may not be practicable, and if it's not, then if the bridge is the only feasible option, that we would be amenable to that as well. I still think that that is the best resolution and what we should continue to support. I'm not in favor of limiting our options strictly to the tunnel, because at the end of the day, I strongly believe that having commuter rail is integral to the future success of the mobility of folks in the South Florida region. We've got 1,000 people a day moving to Florida, many of them are coming down here to South Florida. I-95 is increasingly congested. Any traffic study will tell you that you cannot continue to add lanes to a highway and build your way out of congestion. The more lanes you add, the more congestion you have. The only thing that works in the long run is mass transportation. If you want to deal with sustainability and sea level rise, we have to reduce pollution. We have to reduce our carbon footprint. The only way to do that is through public transportation, is through a rail line. We need to support rail in South Florida. We have to have a solution that gets us across the river. We have to connect Palm Beach County to Miami-Dade County. We cannot be the impediment to getting this done. We can't be the equivalent of Southwest Tenth and the Sawgrass Expressway, which didn't connect to I-95 for over 20 years because of political interference. I just, I urge my colleagues to remember that we should not stand in the way of progress on the rail line and support whatever solution gets done. So, I'll just leave it at that. I don't support restricting our options.
Okay, so let me respond to that, if I may. I truly believe that rail travel is important, and it's another alternative to finding transportation solutions between Palm Beach County and Miami-Dade County. But I will never, ever compromise the quality of life of our community just to satisfy the needs of other communities. We have a thriving downtown. We spent years planning for it, investing in it, and now appreciating it. And the bridge through the middle of our redevelopment area would only compromise all the efforts that we have made, all the investment that has been made into our community. And I fully understand the need to provide additional methods for traveling from north to south. Hey, a couple weeks ago, I had to go to Miami twice, and it took me two and a half hours once to go to Miami Beach and two hours to get to Coral Gables. And I think, and that was starting from Broward Boulevard. It wasn't just, oh, it's only Miami traffic. It was from Broward Boulevard all the way down bumper to bumper. That is ridiculous. And we're talking, how many lanes do we have? Five, six, seven lanes in each direction? I mean, that's insane. And yes, while rail is not a panacea, it's another opportunity for us to consider. But never will I compromise the people that live in our city in order to satisfy the needs of other cities. And I think that there is a reasonable alternative. There is, it's affordable, it's reasonable, and it's available to us. And to ignore it makes no sense to me whatsoever, so I fully support this resolution. Anyone else have comments? There being none, please call the roll.
A resolution, City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, urging Broward County, the Broward Metropolitan Planning Organization, and the Florida Department of Transportation to recommend construction of a tunnel as the locally preferred alternative for the commuter rail train crossing the New River in the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and providing for distribution direction to the city's state lobbyists. Resolution of Resolution Number 23-302, rescission of any other conflicting resolution provisions and an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
No.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
No.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Trentalas, yes. Yes. So, the resolution's approved. Is there any further business of the commission at this time?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
Are we going to do city commission reports?
That's at the conference meeting. This is the evening meeting.
Great, so.
So, I'm going to end this meeting, and then we'll go back to the conference meeting.
So, I am interested in serving on the Broward MPO. I think that requires a motion, if I'm understanding the city clerk right. City clerk, is it?
Yeah, we did buy motion last time. I was just going to pull it up just to-
Okay, great.
Just one second.
So, all right, so are you moving to nominate yourself as the second city representative on the MPO?
Am I able to make a motion about myself, Dwayne?
You can do that. Well.
Let's ask Marilyn. Right?
There's no bar against it.
Okay.
There's no bar against anything.
Great.
Do I hear a second?
So, a move to be placed on the Broward MPO.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been seconded? The move is seconded? Any questions? There being none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Not present.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and congratulations.
Thank you. I look forward to serving, and I'll report back regularly on progress.
Work on our share of that one cent sales tax.
I am going to work hard and diligently that we get that going.
Please, please.
Okay, is there any further business of the evening meeting? There being none, that meeting's concluded, and we'll now resume the conference meeting. Let's go back to that. I think we left off that conference reports, commission reports. Commissioner Herbst is not here right now, so Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm sharing my report at this time. On Wednesday, December the fourth, I had the pleasure of attending the fire rescue recruits graduation.
Oh, how was that?
And, oh, with always amazing. It's exciting to see those new recruits being pinned and all excited to take on their new roles. At that meeting, excuse me, at that ceremony with me was Commissioner Herbst, our city acting city manager was there, and also the city deputy from-
From HR, Kristen?
Yes, Kristen. Yes, Kristen Meligan was there with us as well. Chief, great presentation of our new recruits, and thank you for always extending that invitation to us. And I think also, Tamika, you were there, weren't you? Yeah, so we had a nice representation from the city in welcoming our new recruits. Also, I had the pleasure that evening to attend the mentoring mentors of tomorrow's leaders at Stranahan High School. They inducted 100-plus high school students into their organization, and this is a peer-driven mentor opportunity, and it was amazing to see those young people in their blazers, ready to take on opportunities to be leaders. I'm not going to say of tomorrow, but of today, because they're focused and they are really ready to be a part and be productive citizens, not only in our city, but nationwide. So, thank you to Stranahan for including us to witness that particular ceremony. Also, on, let's see, there's a lot of stuff here. Okay, December 6th, I have to apologize to the champion, Breakfast of Champions for the homeless organization. 6:30, I do not know exactly what happened, but I missed that event, so I owe them apology. I did say I was going to attend, and it's an event that I really enjoy, and I apologize for not fulfilling that commitment that I made, but it's my understanding.
You made me slave away.
[laughing].
And have to serve all those eager, hungry people.
So, I do apologize for that, but I know it was a great event, and I do understand, Mayor, you did represent well, so good job, good job, good job.
Thank you.
Also, that evening was light up Six Trunk. In attendance was colleague, my returning, Vins was with us, and also fire chief and police chief. They all helped us light up the tree on Six Trunk. A beautiful evening. Thank you all for supporting that. You know, just like all the light up across the city, it's one of the events that is truly embraced by our neighbors, and I thank Parks and Recs and all of those who helped to put that event together for us. Moving along a little further, on Friday, December the 13th, 8:00 AM, Walmart, number 2946, which is at Broward Boulevard and 27th Avenue, they had a grand reopening. They have redesigned the inside of the store, and it was a great event. Our police was there to witness it, along with Stranahan's marching band, and it was just a great opportunity to see how Walmart is embracing still the community and inviting everyone in and doing improvements to keep that shopping area friendly for everyone. And I'm looking forward also, well, also with that, we presented a proclamation from the mayor's office for their service and the opportunity from the city, for the city. Also, on the same evening, 4:30, we had the Light Up Carter Park Christmas tree light-up event, which is also another great event. Thank you to our police. They were really, our police, and also Marty Kerr's office, public, no, I always get that wrong, property appraiser, I always want to say public defenders, I don't know why. But anyway, they brought in many toys for the community. public defenders. I don't know why. But anyway, they brought in many toys for the community. This is also an event that's always embraced. And thank you, everyone, for coming out and making that event also grand. And let's see here, upcoming events. Friday 27, Friday, December 27th, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM at Bass Park is the Kwanzaa Celebration. And I'm inviting everyone to come out and experience that with the community. Then Monday, moving forward into the new year, January the 20th, 9:30 AM, our annual Martin Luther King Parade, we will be starting. Mayor, you gonna let me ride in your, your convertible again this year? Okay. We'll be lining up at 9:30. Well, the event starts at 9:30, and it ends at Carter Park. Also, that following Saturday, January 25th, there is, through the same organ organizers, the Martin Luther King Gospel Explosion, which will be held at Lincoln Park, 600 Northwest 19th Avenue, from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. There's one item, Susan, that I want to bring to our attention. Again, it is the Elks Lodge at 7th Avenue, and that should be First Street. That property is being utilized for storage, trucks, boats, there are vehicles.
I thought we were building something there.
No, not yet. That, that property is like on the litigation for some reason. But my question is, because understanding it is under code violations, is being fined, is there opportunity to go to the next level for any type of nuisance and abatement?
Al's coming up.
Okay.
I know there's timeframes involved, and he's gonna talk about those.
Because again, he knows we, we receive numerous complaints about it. And one of our neighbors tonight even brought some more pictures to show me tonight about it.
So, good evening, Al Battle, Acting Director Development Services. So you're right, there are several code violations on the property, and we continue to do enforcement because they continue to break the code with respect to violations on the property. So we've taken a special magistrate, and as you said, fines are running daily on the property. I hadn't talked to staff about taking it to, to the nuisance level. I can, I can look into and see what threshold would be based on where we are today and where we would need to get to and get back to you. But I, I, we are in agreement, whatever we can do to get stronger enforcement, we're, we're for that. Some of the more simpler violations that they have in terms of the fencing and things of that nature that are out of, are in disarray or are not in compliance, if you will. They comply with those minor things, but clearly the storage, the maintenance of the building, things that you can visually see, the illegal storage, clearly that's there. We can't take it off the property unless we get some type of high level of enforcement. But I'll circle back with you and let you know what we can do to heighten our efforts to get, to get greater compliance on the site.
Thank you very much, and the neighbors, thank you as well.
Yeah, but, but, but Al, this is what happens in a situation like that. The fines run, it's a nonprofit, you know, the property we either sell or whatever, they'll come back and they'll say, okay, we want to rehabilitate it, you know, please waive all the signs. In the meantime, it's been, it's been a property that has, you know, continues to bring the area down because it's, it's, it's in bad condition. And to the commissioner's point, we need to be more aggressive in enforcement, because just letting fines run is not the answer. And, and I know how this commission is, and it's like every other commission, they have a soft heart for, for nonprofits. And, you know, and after $200,000 in fines run, they'll say, oh, we'll waive it just so that something gets finally gets done there. But we've got to really push them. And I know it's, it's in litigation, but, you know, that can't be any excuse for allowing the property to deteriorate. So we need to take it to the next level.
Don't, don't disagree, and we'll use all efforts that we can. I do not believe the not-for-profit is in ownership position anymore. So part of our ability to, we believe to gain compliance is applying pressure to that owner. They've got their own issues with the not-for-profit, but those have nothing to do with our ability to enforce.
Thank you for clarifying that, because that was gonna be my question. Is the owner is a nonprofit, which they are not.
They are not.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is that conclusion? Okay. Commissioner Herbst, back to you. Do you have any reports today?
Thank you, Mayor. Normally I don't, but we did have one significant event in the district that I would like to highlight. So we had the reopening of Dottie Mancini Park.
Yay!
And so I want to say thank you to all the staff that was involved in helping to bring that to its conclusion. So we worked very hard for the last year. The neighborhood really was suffering without their park. And through, through the assistance of the city manager, her staff, Parks Department, everybody that got involved with this, I just want to say thank you. It was, it was a very well-attended event. It was their holiday party and ribbon cutting for the park. And I can tell you, all the folks that are out there, the neighbors and the children are just thrilled, thrilled to have their park back. So Susan, thank you to you and everybody that participated in getting that done, and to everybody at Broward Health that, you know, that, that helped get that across the finish line. It was a, it was a lot of work. It was a lot of arm twisting on everybody's part, but we finally got there. And as I had to reassure the neighborhood, in government, nothing happens quickly. A year is actually lightning speed. So again, thank you to everybody.
So now the ball is in our court to get Broward Health's permits approved as soon as possible.
Absolutely.
And absolutely, we put a matrix together with all the requirements, and they're reporting to me on a monthly basis. So making sure that moves along as fast as possible.
The sooner we get that done, the sooner our rent drops down to a dollar a year. So yes, with, with all due haste.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Okay, Thursday, December 5th, I wanted to say congratulations to Richard Gray, who retired from the Visit Florida offices.
Not Visit Florida, Visit Lauderdale.
I'm sorry, did I say Visit Florida? Oh, my God, I'm so sorry. Oh, my God. I apologize. Visit Lauderdale.
Visit Lauderdale.
Oh, my God, what a mistake.
Yes.
Thank you. Visit Lauderdale, 33 years. Richard was primarily probably a pioneer in the United States when it comes to targeting and marketing the LGBTQ community, which was an incredible economic boom for our area. So I want to say congratulations. He did amazing work. Had a, had a great, great, great function that evening. Mayor, you were there as well. So congratulations and all the best to you in your retirement. That evening also, again, holiday parties galore in District 2. Lake Ridge, Lakers had its, its annual Taste of Italy. I think it's the 10th year in a row Lake Ridge has celebrated at Cafe Vico for their Taste of Italy. Always a great turnout, always a lot of fun, a lot of laughs. Monday, December 9th, Council of Fort Lauderdale Civic.
By the way, I ran into a fellow there that my brother, older brother graduated with, who I had not seen in seven, six, 50 years.
Wow.
He moved to the area. Isn't that funny?
That's amazing.
Yes.
Maybe you should say that for your reports.
That's okay.
Okay. All right. So he.
Wow. Turn off his microphone, please. Turn off his microphone.
Okay, hey. All right, sorry. Hey, it's the end of the year. Give me some slack. Let's, let's let it rip. It's the end of the year. Okay. Okay. Anyway, great party. Council of Fort Lauderdale Civic Associations, congratulations for that holiday party at Cafe Seville. Always a great turnout. Again, a lot of fun. Folks from all over the city. It's always a pleasure. Tuesday, December 10th, the Viceroy ribbon cutting of its sale center at 451 Northeast 4th Street. If this sale center is any indication of what those residents are going to look like, then we are in for quite an amazing, quite an amazing residential experience in Flagler Village. Actually, that will also be the location tomorrow evening for the Flagler Village Civic Association's holiday party. That evening also, on the 10th, the Central Beach Alliance had its holiday party over at Cafe Del Mar on the beach. Again, tremendous turnout, huge numbers. Again, a wonderful, wonderful party. Wednesday, December 11th, it was a pleasure to be with the Fraternal Order of Police for their holiday party at Tap 42. There were several of us there that evening as well. That evening also, the Dolphin Democrats held their holiday party. And Sailboat Ben Civic Association had its last meeting of the year and their holiday party. Monday, December 16th, that was just yesterday, I guess. We had a good time over at the Riverside Hotel. Mr. Monopoly was in town. The Hasbro folks were here in June. The mayor and I met with them, and they began their learning experience of our amazing city to put together the new board game that is the Fort Lauderdale edition of Monopoly. Great turnout as the mayor and Mr. Monopoly arrived on La Solas Boulevard, and wonderful event upstairs on the 8th floor. Really nice, strong group of people from all around the city. Lot of fun. People are really excited to see it. I guess it's available all over the place now, with a lot of our local locations on the board. Great holiday gift. Upcoming, December 18th, we have the, I guess that's tomorrow. Wow, Wednesday, the grand unveiling of Nativo, a new concept in residential ownership over at 606 East Broward Boulevard. Also, I'm sure Commissioner Sorenson will make this announcement, but I think I will stop off at the Downtown Civic Association tomorrow evening in Flemings as well. I was invited. I'm going to go and then head over to the Flagler Village Civic Association holiday party as well. I want to mention that this year's an interesting happening with the first night of Hanukkah, actually on Christmas Day, December 25th. That's unusual. It's a little bit late for Hanukkah in the calendar, but that'll be a very joyous evening for many, many, many people. I want to wish everyone, and by the way, December 26th, the next night, we do have the city's menorah lighting at the La Solas Oceanside Park. And I do want to wish everyone a very safe, Merry Christmas, a happy Hanukkah, a happy and healthy New Year. Just a couple of comments. I want to let staff know that I think that the Umbella Project at 315 Northeast 3rd Avenue in Flagler Village is a perfect template that we should try and require all developers to do in terms of cleaning up an area that's getting ready to go under construction, the fencing, the turf that they have around. I just think that they've done a beautiful job of not just an ugly chain link fence, not just, you know, this green screening topping thing ugly. This, if, if you haven't seen it, just go by there. I really, really appreciate the way it looks. It's just so clean. It's so tidy. It's so neat. It lets you know exactly what's happening on that site, and it just looks excellent. So I just wanted to mention that aesthetically, it's just a home run. And I just think that maybe, I don't know if we're able to require certain conditions of developers when they get a parcel approved for development. I don't know how far we're able to go.
Well, do you, do you want the city to do the same thing about the old city hall site, too? We have an ugly chain link fence.
You know, I'm just saying.
You want lifestyle panels on the.
You know, I'm just saying that we can do better. We can do better. We can clean these sites up. They don't have to look like just, you know, scars in our city, scars on the land. They, they could just be a little bit more presentable. That's all I'm saying. I'm not gonna beat a dead horse. Okay. Also, I brought this up before. We need to do better when it comes to coordination of events and our calendars. I've had, in the last month, so many different neighborhood people telling me that they're just learning of a, of an event or a Fortify Lauderdale. They don't know about it. There's overlap with other events. Like just today, we had Santa on the beach. We're all sitting here. We could have been with Santa on the beach. There's just things that I think that we can do a better job coordinating the calendar, so that people can have an opportunity to have enough advance notice, and people can go to as many things that they might like to go to. That's, again, I just think it would be really helpful if we could just do a better job on that. And lastly, I would just like to know, where are we on the La Solas garage? I get asked all the time from the beach residents, what is happening with this garage, with the lighting? Where are we? Do we ever expect the timeline that's gonna be presented? Are we gonna ever? I know that we hired outside counsel, but, you know, where are we?
I see Ben leaving the room. No. Dan, where are we in the litigation there? Or Dewane?
So I spoke with Attorney Brown about, about the litigation. We have our experts finishing, or they wrapped up the report. It's going to be presented to the potential plaintiffs in this case, and then the, those plaintiffs will have an opportunity to inspect the garage.
The potential plaintiffs? Where the plaintiffs?
Defendants, I apologize.
Okay.
Wrong terminology. So we're using the 558 process for construction defects under the Florida statute. And so after they have an opportunity to review the report and inspect, they have the obligation to come to us with certain potential remedies for, to address the issue.
Okay. I, I just would love to see us move on this. Residents really do miss all of the different, you know, nice lighting displays, especially during the holidays. Everything that we used to do there to commemorate every single holiday. And I just hope that we can get this on track. Thank you.
Well, Commissioner, Vice Mayor, I think I've said in previous meetings that the progress of the litigation should not prevent us from making any efforts to rehabilitate the screening of that garage. One has nothing to do with the other, because the one has to, the one has to do with our claim and reimbursement for the, for the defective equipment that's there now. If we have to wait for litigation through a 558 process, that could take years. And I, I personally would not want to wait that long. And so at some point, I would like city staff to come back to us and give us an idea as to what it would actually cost to restore the lighting system that's there now, or, or replace it, as the case may be. I think you once indicated, Ben, that they don't make that anymore. It's obsolete. And then if we want to restore the exterior of that, there's a certain package. We could buy a certain type of, of lighting system, and it came at a certain cost. So if you could sort of resurrect that conversation for us, because the other, the other is gonna keep, is gonna take time to, to resolve itself. And how many years are we gonna wait? I mean, that, many, many people were against that lighting display at the, at the beginning before it was built, and ever since now, people are complaining it's not there anymore.
Yes, as an update, myself and city staff have been doing some research. We talked with some industry experts outside of the product that we brought to you last time. I've directed city staff to start working on the solicitation process. So we're hopeful that in the next 30 days, we'll have a scope fully defined, and then we'll be submitting that to the procurement department to go through our normal chain of action. But as interim city attorney said, I think we need to be cautious of making sure that whatever action we take with replacement parts align with whatever claim that we have, because if there is a way for the defendant to rectify the situation or remediate situation, we don't want to conflict with that. So we'll continue with our solicitation efforts with just a word of caution that we may, you know, have consultation with city attorney's office that, that slows that down or stops that process.
Agreed. Okay, thank you.
That's it for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Sorenson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just add maybe one event to all the good things that have been mentioned. It was the 52nd anniversary of the Winterfest Boat Parade and.
53rd.
53rd. Thank you.
The 52nd didn't, didn't happen.
How time flies. Okay, their website says 52. So that's right. They'll, they'll update it.
And they, and they misinformed me, but.
Oh, did they? All right. Well, well, it was great. It was great. The mayor was there. Just fantastic. You know, over a million people watching our city and just amazing celebration that that was. So we've already started talking about how to partner even closer with the city in the Winterfest Boat Parade for next year. So that's all exciting. Thank you to Lisa Scott Founds, who is the seat president and CEO, and Bill Walker's the chair, and the whole team just did fantastic. So great, great success for the city. Awesome. A couple items just want to touch on. One, exploring the annexation of unincorporated parts of Broward County, specifically some of the neighborhoods like Boulevard Gardens, Franklin Park. Is this something we've talked about recently? I just, I just want to get a sense if we've talked about and decided no, or if we're, yeah.
Yeah. Well, we've, we've talked about it, but we've never moved forward with it.
Yeah, and I think Laura's group, she's not here right now, but had a presentation. If the commission would like, we can dust it off. Just do some quick updates and have it back for your consideration, if that's something you'd be interested in.
I think one of the impediments to annexing it is the, whether or not they're revenue neutral.
Right.
And maybe if Laura can update her report, that might be helpful.
That was part of the analysis. So there were some estimates on costs of infrastructure and providing services versus the, the revenue generation. So again, we can do a quick update, maybe not a full study. And if the commission's interested in pursuing any or all, then we would go into a, a more formal and updated study. But like I said, we can do something.
Well, I'm in agreement, because that was one of the first initiatives that I requested when I first was elected. So any opportunity to revisit.
Okay.
And have that discussion, because there are, I still call neighbors in our community, adjacent communities that are very much interested in being annexed into the City of Fort Lauderdale.
That was gonna be my next question. Is there, you're hearing interest or?
Yes, yes, definitely.
Okay. All right. Great, Susan. So can that be a, you know, quick discussion at some point?
And I think the, doesn't the county provide financial incentives, or do they stop doing that? They used to buy us off, you know, please take this.
And it would all be subject to, it's something we can negotiate it with them.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we'll look forward to that discussion. This was brought up earlier, which I thought was a great point, is adopting some form of parliamentarian system like Robert's Rules of Words or other. I think that makes sense. Is that something we could ask Dewane to kind of explore and come back to us with options or ideas for what might be helpful there?
I might have to learn Robert's Rules.
Be good. Good learning opportunity.
You'll have to give me a book for Christmas.
We'll do it. Light reading. We'll do it, light reading. Is that, okay, that's something we can explore? So Dewane, is that fair to come back with?
Sure.
Options or ideas or recommendation, whatever you think.
Okay.
You know, okay, great, thank you. This was, I, I just learned more about this, public art funding. So I remember years ago, we were passing ordinance or they looked at public art funding, and my recollection was it was for private development, but now the state, or, and maybe it was never for, I thought it involved, yeah, so, so it's only city development. And basically, very few city projects fit under that. In fact, I don't, remind me, Susan, I mean, do we, I, I think we have little to no funding in that?
Correct, so none of, there were exclusions for bond-funded projects or ones that are in enterprise funds such as the, the water plant.
Right.
So really, nothing has qualified to this point.
Yeah, so it's basically, it, it doesn't do much.
No, but I have, during your absence, I actually did request that we revisit this ordinance. I think it is, actually isn't it being re-looked at now?
Absolutely, there's a, there's an active effort between our office and the Department of Sustainable, well, the Development Services Department, and also...
Also known as, formerly known as.
Formerly known as, right. And, and Josh.
Okay.
So actively working on it.
Great, and, and what part are you revisiting or exploring?
Well, the reason why our code is drafted the way it is is because Florida statute, Chapter 70 spells out what's called government, prohibited government exactions, that you can't force a developer to make a payment or an improvement that isn't directly tied to the impact of his, his or her development. So that was our initial concern. We know that there are municipalities and counties out there that do it, but when we reached out to them at the time, you know, we had like vague statements, yes, it's, yes, we can do it and we think it doesn't violate. And then we had conversations and there wasn't really the support that was there that we think would shore up our ordinance.
But this aren't, these aren't private developers, these are public projects that...
They want, in order for the fund to be funded, the desire is to have us assess it against private development and make it a development requirement.
Yeah, but in our public projects, like our water plant, why couldn't we have a set aside a half a percent for public, for a public art? Unless it was a violation of the bond? I don't know. I mean, that's really like...
So there were, yeah, there were concerns on bond covenants, and then obviously with something as large as the water plant, if we had applied the percentage...
Well, that's what I'm saying.
And, yeah, it would be, it was going to be like $10 million.
Hey, arts, arts expensive.
Yeah, but you can't just say, oh, because it's so much, we're not going to do it. I mean, is there really, is there the rationale of saying that it's not properly applied to that water plant?
So, so it wasn't just because it was so much, it was because it was bond-funded and bond funding wasn't eligible, there was a carve-out in the current ordinance for bond-funded projects, yes. But it would have been a lot if we had applied that percentage.
Why do we carve out bond funding? I mean, is that typical for public art ordinances around the nation, that you carve out bond? Because a lot of people do use bond funding.
I, I think at the time, and I'm just trying to recollect, like at the time, I think it was the guidance of bond council at the time because there are usually certain conditions associated with those, that those processes, but we, we can revisit that as well to take a look at why that was done.
Yeah, great, so appreciate your work in my absence and fantastic. And, yeah, it'd be great to just get a refresh on that and, and, you know, having Josh here or what, just to kind of walk through what are options or not. Great, okay, thank you, look forward to that. Mayor, Inter Miami, how, what's, what's happening, what's the schedule look like for mediation and so forth?
So we were able to schedule a mediation for January 15th.
Okay.
That's our next step.
Okay, great. Thank you for that update. Look forward to hearing as much as you can share. Great, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, so a few things. You've mentioned everything.
Well, what about that guy you haven't seen in 55 years? You could, maybe, maybe you can elaborate on that a little bit.
Their presentation.
Just a little bit more detail, like what did he drink that night? What did he have to eat? How did he, what did he dress up?
That was my private moment, so, thank you.
Oh, okay, okay, all right.
I just came back last week, I attended the Combat Antisemitism Movement Summit in Los Angeles. You may recall that last year, we hosted it here in Fort Lauderdale. I was asked to provide the opening speech with regard to the summit, and I attended the, the entire event. It was over 200 cities were represented at the summit and brought back some excellent ideas on how we can, and at some later point in time, I'll be happy to share them, ideas on how to continue the fight against prejudice and antisemitism here in our own communities. The Winterfest Boat Parade was a great success and a wonderful relief from the fact that we didn't have it last year. The wind did kick up a little bit this year, was a little concerned about some of those boats, but fortunately, not enough to, to prevent it from happening. On December 15th, I attended Whiskers in Wonderland fundraiser. This was held at, at the Andrew and Tanya Heller home here in District Four. Wonderful event, meeting a lot of good people. Whiskers in Wonderland is a fundraiser to help spay and neuter cats and dogs, mostly cats, and to find homes for, for these, for these animals that have been abandoned by their owners. That same day, I attended the retirement service for Father Grady, Michael Grady, at the St. Anthony's Catholic Church here in, in Victoria Park. He served the community for 10 years and was retiring from that community, so we presented him a proclamation and a key to the city. That morning, I also attended, at the First Baptist Church, the, the, I won't say it's the same Christmas pageant that they used to have, but it was like a beginning revival of the Christmas pageant, and they kind of evolved into a Sunday service. So I attended two services on Sunday and feel terribly blessed as a result. But it was a busy day this past Sunday, all these events happening. The next day, yes, the Monopoly unveiling, the Fort Lauderdale edition. Great that Fort Lauderdale was able to participate in this event, and really, the community was very excited about it. There were lots of people there, and I want to thank Mike Wayman for allowing the Riverside Hotel to host the event. And, and I haven't gotten my hands on an edition yet, but I hope to, to play it, and perhaps I'll beat you, Vice Mayor, we'll see. Speaking of Nativo's opening on the 18th, have they been given their building permit yet? I mean, they, are they approved to be a building yet? And here we're having a sales event? I don't want to be picky, but...
Sorry about that. I checked maybe two weeks ago and I saw there's, the development permit is approved, but not a building permit, as last I checked.
Okay, what's the difference?
So a development permit gives them the entitlements to build and go into building permitting, the building permit gives them the approval to actually construct.
The actual building?
Right.
Okay.
They're on their way.
All right.
The concept is interesting for Fort Lauderdale, don't you think? Where you actually will own a unit, but the units are all basically designated for be vacation rental units.
Correct.
It's, it's, that'll be like first of its kind for us, right? We've never had a, a concept like that.
No, we haven't, not, not, not intended to be that way. So, let's see, December 19th, we have the Hanukkah menorah light up here at the, at City Hall at 4:00 PM. Again, that's December 19th, which is, I guess, in two days. And it'll be at City Hall in my office at 4 o'clock, everyone's welcome to attend. And then that, an hour later, the Downtown Jewish Center Chabad is having an appreciation event for our police department, that's at 5:00 PM. I think, Ben, you mentioned the Edgewater and River Oaks Holiday Party at Slackers at 995 Marina Mile, hope to attend that, too. And then we do the ribbon cutting for the new River Oaks pump station. I'm sure the community's going to be very happy that that's finally being installed permanently. So that's at 2:00 PM on December 20th. Then we have, we have Christmas. And now Hanukkah's the same day now, does that mean you'll be going to a Chinese restaurant or do you not?
Yes, actually for lunch and dinner on that day, yes. You have to do two meals to back up for that.
I'll see you at Rainbow Palace, I'll see you at Rainbow Palace.
Yes, thank you.
Let's see, the 26th, we're having the light up menorah at the La Solas Oceanside Park, that would be the next day, but you won't be here, so hopefully every, some others folks from the, from the commission could attend. That's over on the, like, again, the La Solas Oceanside Park, the day after Christmas. Yeah, the loop, correct. And then the 27th, City of Fort Lauderdale will be participating at Bass Park for the Kwanzaa Yujama celebration at 2:30 PM. And then we have the countdown of New Year's Eve, the anchor drop on Hammershy Street, and I think that's at 12 o'clock, right? Yeah. So the whole community is invited, hope to see everyone there, hopefully the weather's good. And I just have one question now, an issue to bring up. The federal courthouse, federal building here on Broward and Third Avenue, the folks at the General Service Administration is once again asking us if the city has any interest in a reuse of the building, once the, the court, the courts move out, which the courts should move out, I think it's in 2026, I believe they plan to be fully operational. So they're now asking us, do we want to preserve the structure? Do we want to, do they, do we want them to, to surplus it and, and put it out for bid for a developer to come in and tear it down and, and build something else? And we'd probably put a historical marker there. At some point, I think we should have a discussion regarding this, there's no urgency in terms of time, but I think at some point, we need to have a conference meeting and discussion on this.
So Mayor, we've made that one of the points for the goal setting, one of the items that we're going to be talking about.
Okay, so give it some thought.
As it relates primarily to City Hall, but in that context.
Yeah, okay, all right, very good.
Susan, can I, on that topic, can I just ask you maybe to touch base with the Historical Society? I remember several years back, I attended a whole day conference with folks from, I can't remember what university in the state came down, their whole, like, architecture department and, and Division of Historical Resources at the state came down. There were tours of the building, lots of interesting information. The building is definitely worthy of historic designation, there's a lot there, but I, I just think it's, it would be good for us to have some of that information, even if it's in some sort of executive, you know, format, where it's not the full report, but there's some good stuff that they put together, I just think it might be valuable to take a look at it.
Okay, we'll take a look. We're going to do a white paper on each of the issues, so we'll make sure we include that.
Yeah, and I'm sure they have a record of that. I remember, I think Patricia Zoller attended that day-long workshop as well. Thank you.
Okay, and that's it.
Mayor, can I bring up one thing?
Yes, sir.
So you, you, your, your comments about building permits kind of raised a question for me. So, Susan, I saw a, a thing on Channel 10 talking about the Pier 66 and our building inspector being dead. Can you enlighten me about this?
The person who signed off on the...
Right, right, we had a dead building inspector signing off on permits for a building that's...
What happened there?
Yeah, what's, what's going on with this?
So, so the, I guess the owner of the property, Travis, Travis Stock is, Tavistock is the one that actually gave us notice that that was the case. They did have someone who was qualified do the rein inspections. We met with the city attorney's office about this last week just to get more information. And generally, we are simply required by state statute to accept what they provide.
So how, but how did this, how did that person's signature get, get attached to documents to begin with?
So, so Chris is walking up, and I'm sure he'll have some more information.
I mean, it sounds like we've got significant fraud underway here, and I don't know how you do inspections after the fact. I mean, once the walls are closed up, closed up, how do you do electrical, plumbing, mechanicals? Once everything's sealed up and sheet rock is up and, you know, everything is done, how do you do inspections?
Yep, and Chris, yeah, we talked about that.
Yeah, so Commissioner, the Pier 66 project, like a number of larger projects here in the city especially, used a private provider. And under the state statute, the use of a private provider can be used for plan review and/or building inspection for the primary building trades, so structural, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. In the case of a private provider, that private provider is actually the building department for that project. The city of Fort Lauderdale is able to look at inspection reports, audit documents, but that private provider is essentially the building department and building official for that project under state statute. So what happened in this case was that they had an engineer of record who was looking at electrical and, no, I'm sorry, I think plumbing and mechanical inspections and signing off all those inspection reports. It was found that that person, I think allegedly, I don't know if they've actually convicted, but that he was using his deceased father's state license to perform those inspections. NV5, who is a private provider, found out about that issue. They reached out to Tavistock, Tavistock reached out to us to let us know. The city really doesn't have any recourse in that action. Again, they're their own building department at this point under state law, so they are functioning as the project's building department essentially. They brought on a new engineer of record for those trades to come in and do rein inspections. All we look at is that, that person who is licensed by the state, working within that building department through NV5, has provided those updated inspection reports with their signature on it. So that's, the city's responsibility is to look, see that those inspection reports were signed by a licensed individual.
So it's interesting, because when I've had work done and building inspectors have come by my house, I mean, they have torn it apart. I mean, they're measuring stuff, they got tape measures out, they're poking me, they're telling me I got to move screws by half an inch, you know, they're ripping things out and everything else, but now you're telling me all these guys need to do is just like hand in a report, and we say, no problem, looks good.
So the private providers do not fall under the authority of the city of Fort Lauderdale Building Department when they're acting as the building department for that project?
And this is an absolute conflict of interest because they're getting paid by the developer to look the other way. This is, this is so irresponsible to me that we do this. I, I hear what you're saying, that state law allows this, do we have to allow this?
Preemption.
We, we, we can't say no, this is preempted. God, this is, this is like a license to steal.
But honestly, honestly, I would think...
We had a scandal in Jacksonville for the same thing. This is not the first time this has happened.
It happens all over the country, but...
I know.
Especially in New York City, but the thing is that you would think Tavistock would be more concerned than anybody.
I would think so.
Right, and I think they were the ones that finally discovered it and revealed it to us, so...
No, I'm, I'm glad they brought it forward, but I just, I, I, and, and then once that's submitted to us, you're telling us that the extent of our due diligence is simply to take this piece of paper and say, okay, it's been stamped, we're good, we're done, that's it. We're, we've absolved ourself of any further responsibility.
The statute tells us that we are not held responsible for the actions of those private entities. And frankly, the state has, has trended more and more in favor of these private providers and given them more and more rights under the statute over the last several years. So that's something at the state level, I know, I know the State Building Officials Association has pushed back on a lot of these regulations, but it's become more and more favorable for these private providers to operate.
Just curious, was the Surfside using private providers, too, for their inspections?
I don't think they were available back then.
No, I think they were.
Yeah, right. All right, any further questions or business?
Yeah, a couple, a couple thoughts. Just so, as we think about the old federal courthouse, just so I'm aware of the general options. So if federal government surpluses it, when they surplus it, we have, what, first right of refusal? Is, what's, give me the options.
Giving us first right, they kind of, they keep coming back to us, asking us, you know, you know, would you like to take the building? Would you like us to sell you the building?
Okay.
We've had some, we've had several meetings with them. When I say we, I mean me and city staff, and like eight or nine members of GSA and associated departments. And we sat around a big table and, and we were told, well, we can't even have this conversation until, until we do an appraisal. I said, well, when are you going to do an appraisal? And well, we can't do an appraisal until the courts move out. I said, okay, so that's in 2026. And we're not going to tell you what the appraisal is either, you got to do your own appraisal, and if it comes close, then, then, you know, we'll entertain your offer. I said, well, why don't you just give it to us for a dollar, we can take it off your hands? Well, we don't do that. I said, all right, so what are the, what are the real, I mean, these are the kinds of conversations I go on. Oh, well, we don't do that. I said, alright, so what are the, what are the real, I mean, these are the kinds of conversations that go on.
I get it.
And it's very frustrating, because they want, now, but now, a different department has come to us, a little higher level at GSA, and, and they, they have approached us, and I think now they're wanting us to be more engaged in the, in the outcome of what happens with this site. So, has anyone from, Susan, any, like you, or, or none of you guys have had any communications? Okay, so, so we, they're asking for another meeting?
Okay.
And, and, you know, I'd be happy to, to talk to them, but I don't want to do it until after our goal-setting session, in which we've had more of a conversation on this.
Okay, yeah, because I may not be interested, if we can get it, what are our options once we have it? So obviously, preserving is one, is it possibly, could that be affordable housing? Could we, you know, what are all the possibilities?
Affordable housing is one of the things you cannot do, but they, I think they will entertain an educational institution, and, and Junior Achievement has come to us, and they've got a program which they may occupy a large, they're looking for a site. And I proposed that to them, and they were excited about the opportunity to occupy that space. And it's especially good for them, because the rooms are kind of small and compact for classrooms, and, but they're waiting for me to get them in there, so we can give them a tour.
Okay, so if you're saying, if we get it, it has to be preserved as it is, is that what you're saying?
No, 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 not entirely, but it has to be relatively, they don't really care, to be honest with you, at this point.
Okay.
So, they just want to know, what does the city want to do with the building?
Okay, oh, so we do have options.
We do have options.
We have options, what, yeah, want to do with it, okay, that helps.
But the option, but the question amongst us in the community is, is this a building we want to save? Do we want to put it out for a developer who will not save it, they'll just probably tear it down? It's, you know, prime real estate, so that's something we should all discuss as a commission. I don't want to, it's not my opinion about this, it's our opinion. So before I go back to them, I'd like to know what we, what the consensus is here on the commission.
Okay, that helps, thank you.
And for what it's worth, Mayor, whenever I meet with anyone in the development community, I'm always shopping that site around, because I just think, I remember when Tropic Magazine a few years back did a charrette, they had like 20 pages on all these top archi, in fact, I have to get you a copy of that, Susan.
I have, and there were three concepts.
And, and they were kind of cool, I, you know, there's a vacant parcel of land just to the west of that building. I cannot see why anybody wouldn't want to say, hey, I could gut this place, do something really creative and fantastic in this building, get those fountains working, get everything working, and then, a moneymaker on that parcel of land, just to the west of it, adjacent to it. You could build a high-rise, I'm sure zoning would allow almost anything. So I, to me, there's possibilities, I am very much in favor of trying to figure out a way to see adaptive reuse of that building, where someone is able to preserve the entire exterior, gut, gut the whole thing, and then just go to town.
Okay, we'll see what happens. Alright, anything further, any further business?
Just one thing, Mayor, it's not really business, but there was an event that I did attend, and I failed to acknowledge it on Tuesday, December the 10th, First United Methodist Church, they had the homeless memorial. And you mentioned it, this, when we had our moment of silence. Just wanted to say that there was 104 homeless individuals that passed away in our city from the calendar year. United Methodist Church, this is one year, this is one year that was to count. And it's really consistent, this is actually my third attendance to this memorial. United Methodist does a, a beautiful memorial representing those who have, who are deceased. And I just wanted to recognize them and encourage them to continue what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, meeting adjourned. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, everybody. Don't drink too much eggnog.